As... As long as we come on air every evening, the whole world must listen. As long as we preach this very gospel, Chukwokeke Abiyama must be with us. Therefore, without any further hesitation, we must proceed to offer every prayer to Chukwokeke Abiyama who decided in heaven. Therefore, as we always commence, not from today but from of old, our Father who art in heaven, nanyin kabineliwe, kahageden song, that your name may be hallowed by men, that we may bow at the mention of it, that we may offer every glory unto thee, that we may offer you every adoration and adulation, because there is none like thee. You fight our battles for us. Every blessed day you demonstrate through your kindness and your everlasting mercy that you are our Lord, our God and our Creator. This evening we offer these your children unto thee all over this very planet that you created. They are listening across the entire 24 time zones on this very planet. We are the inhabit. They are listening to your gospel this very evening. This gospel of redemption, a gospel of hope, a gospel of restoration, a gospel of renewal. This very gospel of freedom, this very gospel of emancipation as only you ordained. Onye primi yenin that this very gospel must be preached that mankind may be set free from the eternal damnation of the creation of the British. My goodness me, I want to remain in the spirit because we must worship heaven. We answer your name, oh Lord of hosts. Everything about us is designed to offer glory unto thee. We have atoned for our sins last year. This very year we have not only atoned for our sins, we have spilled, we have shed blood. They have shed our blood. We have let our sacrifice be made unto thee. Even on the 30th of August, as we are being failed by the bullets of the enemy, by the workers of iniquity and of darkness, we remain very strong today to beckon upon thee, to ask you for your mercy and for your grace to ensure that your kingdom is restored upon the face of the earth, that you can bring your healing hand to bear upon the life of those of them that you created for one singular purpose and that purpose alone, which is to worship you in truth and in every honesty. Is there any way that we have heard? Is there any way that our ancestors may have seen? We confess before a congregation of the whole of humanity to ask you, oh Lord of hosts, to have mercy upon us. Bikomera nnyebele tinekena naniwe. You must have mercy upon us. We have suffered enough. We have been subjugated enough. We have been tortured enough. We have been imprisoned enough. We did not do these people anything. Our only crime is to answer your name. Our only crime is to be born your children. Our only crime is to excel at everything that we place our hands into. Our only crime is to exhibit your glory and your blessing which manifestedly is upon our lives every blessed day. That is why they want to kill us. That is why the British want to join those of them who don't know you to destroy your creation and your inheritance. You will not allow shame to befall your name. You will not allow the enemies to triumph over the lives of your children because you created us to exist, to worship, to honor and to praise you. That is exactly what we are going to do when this Biafra comes. It will come in truth and in every honesty because we remain every blessed day. Chukwabiyama biniwe witer than white and whiter than snow. Oh, wo zanyisimehene tineke. Is there any way that we have seen that you cannot forgive us, our trespasses, to enable us to fulfill your own word which was spoken thousands of years ago that instead of what you promised not to come to pass, that heaven and earth will cease to exist? You opened your mouth, Chukwokeke Abiyama, to bless mankind to the coming of Yahweh Esuwa, who came here and said, “Let your kingdom come on earth as it is in heaven.” Those words can never be in vain because they are anchored upon your holiness and your magnificence. That is why in the end we know that Biafra will come, that these children that we have given birth to all over the world and their children and their children and their children as long as they give birth to them and they are Biafrans, Chukwokeke Abiyama, hagefe rofe. They will worship you in truth and honesty. Through this very work we are doing, mankind will come to understand you. Let your miracle be ralphed in our lives. Let us witness and behold your magnificence, your holiness, your mystery and your grace under our command. Oh Lord of hosts, we call upon you. We call upon you to heal. We call upon you to provide, support to those of them who are inconsolable. We ask you to come and strengthen those who are weak. We ask you to restore hope where there is hopelessness. We ask you for inclusion where there is destitution. We ask you for one brotherhood, one camaraderie, one bone, one blood and one flesh of your children, the Ephics and the Bibios, the Ison, the Shakiri, the Isobos and also those of them from Isoko. We are traveling all the way to the lands of Igala. We are moving on from there to Idoma, to Igele, to the territories of the Ibo land. All these places we dedicate unto thee. All these lands of yours, we ask you to cover it with your mercy because Biafra will come and when it does, Chukwokeke Abiyama, nige fegeofe noso puliche, we will dance on these streets. I'm telling you, by the time that we are done, humanity will think that we are mad, we are drunk in your glory and rightfully so because your kingdom will come to rest upon this very earth. That very kingdom is the unadulterated, non-negotiable sovereignty of the Republic of Biafra that your will may be fulfilled in our time. Nihilu tayige mesurutineke. All these we pray, all these we ask for in no other name apart from that name that belongs to you. Ahadense sosi nebe yebe, wonnebe yebe. Isse. 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 My name is Namdekanu. I am the leader of indigenous people of Biafra all over this very planet, I tell you. Ruwe ebedine owaso. Ebanaboso zyoma tineke. I lead indigenous people of Biafra, Ipeobi. So also do I command the armies of Biafra. They are fiercely loyal. They are loyal, I tell you, and doing the work that I expect them to do. I also direct radio Biafronya wemna tineke not through any power which I possess or any extraordinary knowledge but by your grace, oh Lord. By your grace, Chukwokeke Abiyama. Wonyamna bi siya la nefe. We honor you and we adore you. I know that some people listening, including the British, may not understand what we are doing but there is nobody in Britain that answers Wachuku, the child of heaven. We do. Therefore, when we worship our father, people should not try to be jealous. They should not feign ignorance or misunderstanding because we are ancient people. We have been doing this for over 5,000 years and will continue to do so until the end of time.
Tell me what we do, everybody want to kill us. They want to take what belong to us. Try. We de love our neighbor, so we de love ourself too. So it is written in the holy book. Try. The time is now, we want to go. Remember your promises. Oh. They are holding our lead, Mazzi Nafika. Now is Prime Minister, Mazzi Simonim. We shall rise and defend our land. The land of rising sun is our hope. Also on your Telegram and WhatsApp groups, post them out. Alright, thank you. So while the anthem is playing, please do well to stand up if your camera is open. If your camera is not open, you are good to go.
We shall emerge triumphant from miso deal and through the crucible unscape will pass. When we appoint the wounds of battle to heal, we shall remember those who guide him past. Then shall our throne, let fill the glorious song of victory, we scour all minds and wrongs. Oh God, protect us from the ill pitfall. Guide all our movements, lest we go astray. Give us the strength to hear the human's call, to give and not, to count the costly chain. Let's all rule to serve with resolution to make this sky a land of righteousness.
Oh hail Biafra. We shall always remember all that perished in the struggle for our freedom. All hail our heroes. Our prayer shall be borne both day and night. Save them always. All hail Biafra.
Thank you. Wonderful people of Biafra, thank you, thank you. This my video will be on later on. You're all welcome to Omambala State De Facto Town Hall Meeting. Yes. Where the people of Omambala State have gathered to make their voices heard in the United States of Biafra and also to pass a message to the world that the Biafra De Facto government in the homeland and compasses of Omambala State and other states that makes up the four states of Biafra. So this town hall meeting today is not just for us to meet our APM, to meet the PRGI officials and to give our collective token to support our liberation in the homeland but it is a testament of the viability of Omambala State as one of the four states of Biafra which we have. So thank you to everyone who have honored this very town hall meeting of this day. And before we forget, let's observe a minute silence to our fallen heroes. So please, if at this point we will need you to even turn on your cameras, please. For those that needs your cameras on, turn on your camera as we observe our fallen heroes' minute silence. Respect them. A minute silence in honor of our fallen heroes, please. We celebrate our heroes' prize who have sacrificed their lives and we appreciate them for everything that they are doing for us to see the United States of Biafra fully liberated. We salute them for being there for us and we salute all Biafrans who have paid the price of this very freedom and liberation of Biafra. As we keep the flag flying above sea level, we look forward to seeing everyone at the end of the tunnel. Isse. 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 Thank you, APM. Thank you to the entire PRGI. Thank you to entire Biafran people who have joined from all the four states of Biafra to support Omambala State Town Hall Meeting. You're all welcome and without wasting time, we go straight into our program of the day. And number one on our program is opening prayer. So opening prayer will be taken by Mazzi Emeka Emi Don. Mazzi Emeka Emi Don, over to you, please. Unmute yourself and take the opening prayer. If you are in the homeland, please, we don't need your camera on. Are you in the homeland? You're in the homeland, I need to shut your camera down.
Vam vam vam, mute.
No, it's not vam vam vam, it's Emi Don. Okay, Emi Don, I've shut your camera down now, alright? Unmute yourself and I'll go ahead with the opening prayers.
Oh hail Biafra.
Oh hail Biafra.
Amen. Is the life. Isos is the life, is the life, is the life. The life is the life. Alpha Omega is the life, is the life, is the life. You are worship. Wali wali. The Lord Jesus, you are worship. We lift your name higher. We lift your name higher. We lift your name higher. Biafra lift your name higher. We shall swale, hallelujah. Oh Lord, we shall swale, hallelujah. My God, we shall swale, hallelujah. Oh, your children shall swale, hallelujah. Jehovah, you are the most high. Jehovah, you are the most high. Holy, you are the most high. My God, you are the most high God. God, you are the most high God. Father, you are the most high God. Oh Lord, you are the most high. My God, you are the most high. Abakule zuri ke, you are the most high. Ewerenweren, you are the most high. Alpha Omega, you are the most high. Shekadija, you are the most high. Chetos metsike, you are the most high. My God, you are the most high God. In Jesus' name, a mighty name of Jesus. Father, oh Lord, the great warrior, the mighty man of battle, the everlasting father, ayamaya. The shining of day, the eyes of your children, ayamaya. Your children have gathered this night, you see, for your Lord, in order to lift your name higher. We Biafrans are here this night, oh Lord. He said that whenever one or two people gather, you are in their midst, oh Lord. He said in the Book of the Bible, chapter 2 verse 3, that whenever your children call upon you, that you answer. He said you answer. That we, your children, is going to see the greatness and mighty in you. That we are going to express the marvelous in you. He said in the Book of the Bible, chapter 2 verse 27, that you are the law, the God of all flesh. Is there anything difficult for you? Is there anything difficult for you, oh Lord? That you are the many person to be possible? That you are the many praises? That you are the many fires? That you are the great warrior? We, your children of Eloheinu, we, your children, have gathered this night, oh Lord, in order to lift your name higher, in order to worship you. We call you, alright, because we are here. We are here in your name, oh Lord. Come and take control. Come and take over. Come and lead us, this journey we are. You are the best. We are plowing you forward. We, that the man, the we that mandated for this journey, we must bring this freedom. We must bring freedom for our people. We must liberate our people because you have mandated us, you have mandated us, oh Lord. We shall lead our people to free the land that you promised to us, oh Lord. That's a promised land that you give to us. You will lead us into it in the name of Jesus. We shall get Biafra. Any obstacle, any storm that stand in our way, we will crush them down. Direct our APM. Direct our, all the Bree cabinet members. Direct our, all the members of Biafra. Those that bring themselves, those that volunteer themselves for this mandate, oh Lord. Direct our men on.
Emi, you are muted or unmute your mic, you are muted. While you're talking, you muted yourself. Okay, continue.
Our leader told us that they will come, but we, the Biafrans, are winners, that we must win them. We will defeat them, no matter all obstacles, all the storms, every, wherever they come from, they will not succeed. We must conquer, we must win. We are Biafrans and winners, we are winners. We defeat all the sorority of Nigeria, Zulu sorority. We defeat all enemies, all the wicked evil ones, but whatever they are coming from, either from Biafra land, either from northernland, either from southeast, southwest, we must defeat them in the name of Jesus. As we are here this evening, oh Lord, as you brought us together to Ombambala State Meeting tonight, we are going to do this meeting successfully, we are going to do this meeting successfully, we are going to do everything possible to make sure that our mission has worked successfully and successfully in the name of Jesus. Come and take control, come and take over this meeting, oh Lord. I pray that you will guide our APM, our APM, you will guide all the cabinet members, all the, all the members of the Fato government, both in homeland. You will direct our admin to lead us in a way that we must follow the direct, direct way so we cannot be victim of secondhand parties. We shall always be a winner in the name of Jesus. Thank you, oh Lord, thank you, Father, thank you, Son, thank you, Holy Spirit, in the name of Jesus.
He say, he say, he say, he say, he say... Thank you, thank you, thank you, thank you, thank you. Thank you. Alright, um, next on the program is, um, welcoming acknowledgement of entire BRGI cabinet. De facto official. Are you going to take that?
Yeah, yeah. Indian admin, we take that.
Indian admin, go ahead.
Nde wo, umuchineke.
Nde wo...
Yeah, well. Each and every one of you here present in today's Town Hall Meeting with BRGI cabinet officials and the Fata government in homeland, more especially our APM in the person of chief, Okichukun Kere. We from the Ombambala State in homeland want officially welcome each and every one of you for making up your time despite your busy schedules to be here today as you always do across all the people of Biafra. I want to thank each and every one of you and welcome you today in this memorable Town Hall Meeting. We welcome you especially our APM chief, Okichukun Kere. Nde ombambala selekenwa, ma ombambala land. Thank you so much for your effort, for driving this trip towards our freedom. We welcome our CRC chairman in the person of honorable Imam Madabun, the first chief justice of United States of Biafra. Honorable Imam Madabun, Nde ombambala selekenwa. We welcome you, we welcome all the BRGI cabinet. We welcome honorable Bryson Okoma, I don't know if he's here or not. You are highly welcome, sir. We welcome honorable Professor Shoma also. We welcome honorable Joy Irogu. We welcome honorable Nnaya, the great woman, as I called you. Mama, you are welcome, thank you so much. I always happy whenever I watch you in our cabinet meeting, in every other, you know, every other meetings, uh, BRGI, you are always there in the programs and honestly, able, okay, okay, able, why you working on me? I like your... Mama, you are welcome, Nde ombambala selekenwa.
Nde, welcome.
We also welcome our great honorable Bobby, the European rep. Honorable Nde ombambala selekenwa, you are welcome. I don't know my personal rep, if my rep is here. Honorable James, audio position one, the Asian rep, we also welcome you in this great meeting today in Ombambala. We welcome all our media teams. We welcome the minister, Honorable Sonia Parawa, Yoko Kondem of our time. Honorable Sonia, you are specially welcome, Nde ombambala selekenwa. You are in my, in my own home state. I would have missed you, I am bulu yazu, I am not in the world. And also, we welcome you, Honorable Sonia Parawa, we welcome you, Honorable Rafael Ajiri, Ivan Van Van, Onye, Onye Pwana, Na, Na Wa, Akwari, Ava, for this weekend. The great man, Van Van Van, you are highly welcome, Nde ombambala selekenwa. Honorable Paul Ubiko, the man that saw tomorrow, the 5-5 vision, you are highly welcome in Ombambala today. Nde ombambala selekenwa. Our great mama, the mama of the house, the mama of this struggle. Amoromoro, Nwokar. In the person of Adolou, you are highly welcome. And I also want, we also want to welcome all the forty states of the homeland, the Fata government, solar administrators and their cabinet and their executives. Here present, you are highly welcome. I can't continue mentioning all your names, but I would organize you, whatever you are, all the forty states, solar administrators and their executives. You are highly welcome to Ombambala today's meeting, Nde ombambala selekenwa. All the county heads, all the county chairmen, executives, you are highly, here present, you are highly welcome. We acknowledge you, acknowledge your effort. We thank you for at least being here with us in order to propagate this, our noble struggle. We thank you all, we welcome each and every one of you, all the lovers of freedom, friends and witnesses of Ombambala and friends and witnesses of this great struggle. Nde ombambala selekenwa, Nde ombambala selekenwa. Thank you and God bless you all as we move on this meeting. Nde wo.
Honorable, thank you very much, honorable. Yeah. Thank you so much, honorable, thank you. And before we go to, before we go to the next item on the program, let us light up the house some more. Let's light up the house.
Yeah.
Let us light up the house. Let us light up the house.
Uh, asking, did you say Biafra will commit 2023? Those who are asking, did you say Biafra will commit 2023? Biafra has been restored already. What is remaining is a complete declaration that will be defended. And before that happen, there are many things that we need to put in place. I want you to recount the achievement of the Biafra Republic government in Exa under the leadership of Simon Ekba, what we have achieved in 2023 and ask yourself that question again, and you will look very stupid. We have been able to form government in Exa in 2023. In 2023, we have formed the de facto government. In 2023, we have launched Biafra Liberation Army. In 2023, we launched Biafra Navy. We launched Biafra Air Force. We launched the forces of Biafra. In 2023, we adopted Helsinki Declaration, which is the constitution of Biafra. In 2023, we had a convention in Finland where Biafra people gathered from all over the world as delegates to vote on the Biafra Charter, which is a legal document submitted to amendment. In 2023, we have created forty states of Biafra and believe me, many more states will come because we are not done yet. In 2023, not only that we created states, we also brought a redesigned and redrawn Biafra map to reflect the current situation and the current demography of Biafra. In 2023, we started engaging officially Nigeria state in a guerrilla warfare on self-defense. In 2023, we officially and publicly engaged Nigeria terrorist army and we are neutralizing them on daily basis. It has never happened before in the history of Biafra after the war. In 2023, we publicly and openly made sure that Nigeria doesn't kill again in Biafra land and go free. So if you look at those things I've mentioned and those ones I have not even mentioned, are you still going to challenge Simon Ekba that Biafra has not been restored in 2023? Biafra declaration is not about mouth pronouncement. It's about putting every structure in place. It's about putting every mechanism and measures in place to shaping the map and the structure of Biafra. In 2023, we have designed the economic viability of Biafra. In 2023, we have kicked off the Biafra urban development project. In 2023, we've made a lot of impact globally. In 2023, the Biafra awareness gained the highest momentum in the history of Biafra since after the war. In 2023, we made the Nigeria terrorist army to cry on the floor of National Assembly. It has never happened in the history of Nigeria. In 2023, those who are serving as the agent of Nigeria, benefiting from the corrupt entity called Nigeria, openly called for persecution, execution and the kidnapping and arresting of Simon Ekba because they know that this is a different thing from what they have seen in their entire life. In 2023, they call for the arrest of Simon Ekba and call for the release of Mazinam Dikano, Confucian. In 2023, after they have used many years to plan the kidnapping of Mazinam Dikano, they have come to say Mazinam Dikano is a saint. He's a very gentleman, he's a nice person. But just two years ago, they kidnapped this nice person from Kenya. Two years ago, they tortured him for eight days. Two years ago, he was an evil man. Two years ago, they called him terrorist. Two years ago, he was everything evil to them. Two years ago, they spent hundreds and hundreds of millions of dollars. They kidnapped him and put him into private jet from Kenya to Nigeria. Two years ago, Mazinam Dikano was everything evil to Nigeria, including to Ahne Zenibu and all of them. Two years ago, he was the only problem of Nigeria. Two years ago, he was the only person that constituted all manner of insecurity in Nigeria. He was the one who is more deadly than Boko Haram. He was everything that Nigeria don't want to see. Today, as Simon Ekba take the Biafra liberation to the next level, the same people are now calling Mazinam Dikano the most sensible person. These are hypocrites, these are devilish people, these are criminals that only thing they want to do is to give dog a bad name in order to kill it. They have given bad, that name to Mazinam Dikano. They themselves were the one who condemned Mazinam Dikano. The same people today, they have seen that, yes, indeed, someone actually followed this footsteps of Mazinam Dikano and ready to drag all of them to Biafra land. So, when we get to Biafra land, we will treat their fuck up very well. Today, the same people who gave the bad name to Mazinam Dikano in order to be kidnapped, they slandered his name, blackmailed him to other ethnic nationalities in Nigeria. All of them today has come to say that Mazinam Dikano is very sensible. Now it is Simon Ekba is the problem. These people who are just evil from bed refuse to understand why Simon Ekba have decided to take this thing upon himself to liberate the people of Biafra who has been subjugated and chained with Islamic state agenda. They found themselves in a hole, they tagged us, thought in a circle because they thought that they have actually systematically conquered everybody by dividing, creating state, dividing us, changing the demography and map of Biafra people. And at the end of the day, they structured out five tiny states, called it five eastern states. And they say, let us continue to divide them. And now they tell you, oh, you are talking about Biafra, you are just five states in the circle. We have come to destroy their evil agenda. Today, you will understand that the plan of the Islamic state has failed. Today, the Biafra people are proudly announcing the forty state, which is called the United States of Biafra. Forty complete state, cut across board, including in the area where they claim they were never Biafra. I have come to learn from what Biafra did wrong in 1967 to 1970. I have come to learn what Uazrike did wrong from the time he started the Biafra movement and I have come to learn what Mazinam Dikano did right and was in the process of doing before they planned and kidnapped him. I continue from there and today, we are where we are. They are not resting. Those IPOB Nigeria are not resting as well. Every given opportunity, they think that there is a fight in the Biafra government. They will say, oh, their hope now is that they are fighting and they are hoping that there is a fight in the Biafra government. That is to tell you that, like we said, there are costs, there are costs and they can never rise again. Biafra government in Exa is a government that nobody born of a woman, marching on this planet, using your foot to walk on the ground, will ever, ever destroy. Biafra has been restored in 2023. We have a government, we have a structure of the government of Biafra. We have every department that meant Biafra government a legitimate government. The people of Biafra are loyal to the government, both in the Exa and in the homeland. We have governors, state administrators in all the forty states of Biafra. We have the deputy governors, which is called administrators. We have the secretary of state of each state in Biafra land. We have the chairman and managers of county and the district. If you do not understand that with this structure we have now, one day you will sleep in Nigeria and wake up in Biafra. It means that you are an idiot. I told you that by the time I finish with Nigeria, you will sleep in Nigeria one day and wake up in Biafra. The next phase is to set up the police of Biafra. The reason why we have not set up the police is because it is going to be state police. Every state will have their police, every state will be independent. It is going to be local police and there is no interference from the central government of Biafra. The military is a joint military, it's one military that will protect this territorial integrity of Biafra. When one state is attacked, it means that you have attacked all of us. So my people, for those who are asking, when are you going to declare Biafra? We have already declared Biafra. We are only waiting for us to conclude the last phase of the Biafra government and one day you will sleep and wake up in Biafra, like I said. Then we must capture every cranny of the Biafra territory.
Thank you, thank you, thank you, and welcome back, welcome back. We go to the next item on the program, item number four. Who takes item number four?
Honorable Emma Ndi Feh.
I remind the Yeah. It is time to present color to all our guests today. Mainly to our APM and his entourage. The Omambala people are here to present a color note. They can, Omendanandi, what's the word? Omendanandi, Biafra's wedding. When you have a guest in your house to show that you accepted the guests being in your place. First, you will present a color. Here with me, as you can see, I don't know if you guys see it. Big color note is here. Uh, old rose and can't be by Asia, mission of the body meal. We present this color to our APM and his entourage as we welcome you people. Uh, have the color in my hand. As you all may know. Ndi was na, can I ask you, oh, gee, oh, go, go. I bet they're in this, oh, gee. Now, so so, Ndi many, but they can, I was pretty, the Mazinamdekanu. Now, so so, Ndi bo. They buy a guy, who's here, you know. As one more, yeah, what a logic, what a long. What a good, if I'm a, yeah, Melani. If I'm a, yeah, Melo, what a Melo, one. If I'm a, yeah, Melo, the Biafra Nina. If I'm a, yeah, Melo, our APM. If I'm a, yeah, if I'm a, yeah, Melo, the BRGIA, in, in, or the cabinet officials, if I'm a, yeah, Melo, in, in. If I'm a, yeah, Melo. Or the defatto government in homeland. This is all I mean, in, in. Melo, no, Melo, is, no, no. Melo, oh, no, Ndi. Executive, no, in, in, if I'm a, yeah, Melo. Ndi, can't he, yes, in, in, can't he, she, amen, in, in, Ndi. Executive, what's, if I'm a, yeah, Melo, no, but start, huh? It can, I, George, in, I can. I, George, I wanna, oh, you go, yeah, me, me, me. You come along, yeah, yeah, come on, yeah, come on, huh? Think you better, no, gee, 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 no, gee, ta. So, gee, you go, okay, okay, eh? Nana, you, baby. Where, but then, I know, Mambala, we establish, Mambala, Nani, Bondi, oh, so, Nina. As a, gee, gee, can I, yeah, gee, ta. I, oh, look, but, Nina, Nina, Mambala. I, 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 what a logic, ta. I, oh, look, but, who, who, I, I, who, who, yeah, what a logic, ta. Oh, more, yeah, what a logic, ta, one, and the, what a logic, ta, oh, who's, what a logic, ta. Well, I, I, what a logic, yeah, what a logic, ta. I, oh, look, but, Nina, yeah, 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 what a logic, ta. I, I, what a, yeah, who, who, yeah, what a logic, ta, who, who, yeah, what a logic, ta, who, who, yeah, what a logic, ta, who, who, yeah, what a logic, ta. Wanna, oh, money, in, in, who, who, no, no, Mambala, yeah, yeah, what a logic, ta. Is he, money, in, in, who, 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 no, no, nah, yeah. What a logic, ta. Move, good, I'm on, time, but, the, like, yeah, Biafra, yes, yeah, who, what a logic, ta.
Fifty thousand Fifty thousand Our APM Fifty thousand Thank you as I break the collar.
Hello.
What is here? So. No. I thank you, Mas, this on here for our work, for your great job, you have been doing in media. Just a little reminder that you can move on. The color have be already broken. I thank you, Mas, for our and all the media teams. I think our APM, because just as our spring that say earlier, that our eyes should be always on the ball. That enemy will try to distract us, we should remain focus. Focus on that ball, because that is our aim, that is the reason why we are here. I thank all the BRGE government, all the cabinet officers, all the defacto government in the homeland. And I want to applaud each and every one of us, mainly people in homeland, for our eyes to be on the ball. Not on the social media propagandas. Our enemies are sponsoring against our struggle. Just as our APM and the BRGE cabinet officials, our media team, I can tell you their eyes is always hundred percent on the ball. Mainly our media team. Because we cannot continue diving for propagandas. Yeah, if those that needed to be debunked, yeah, to be would debunk that. But as our eyes being on the ball, know that our target, yeah. I think, my this on that, but I want, and our BRGE, I will give you guys kudos on that, because I've been monitoring, I mean, I'm involved, I'm seeing what is going on, yeah, on daily basis. I know how many calls I receive on daily basis. I thank you all, but for not giving that, yeah, for all the propagandas. You know, anybody can wake up, and he's there, and he's on her bed, and pick up his phone, and send one or two messages. Set everywhere on fire, just like the one there, they did just few, the Zubibu sponsor just few days ago. That there were APM, our PM. You know, yeah, God already decided to, to to bring him back home. Just for that team, this, that, everywhere in the social media burning. It's good that our eyes will always be on the ball as usual. I thank you all, and I welcome you in my own homeland, Omambala. They won't do it, do it again. Let's move on, thank you.
Thank you, thank you, thank you, thank you. Alright, the collar has been broken, and we want everyone to come and pick their collars. Come and pick collar, come and pick collar. Pick collar, pick collar, pick collar home. Pick collar, so that when you get home, if you ask where you went, you can present the collar. This is what I got from where I went, this is where I went, this is the message from where I'm coming back from. This is the collar that was prayed upon and broken and blessed in the ceremony where I attended. Come and check collar, come and pick collar, come and pick collar. And support the collar breaking. Thank you, the floor is open to the group. There were.
Can you hear me?
Yes, I can hear you, I was. Say it means.
Mas, the Paul Obanago. I am picking the collar with a sum of ten AJ. Do you hear me?
Yes, sir, thank you, thank you, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, our SA, thank you, thank you, thank you. The floor is open for collar picking, the floor is open, the floor is open. Come and pick collar, oh, come and pick collar, come and pick collar. Support Omambala State breaking of collar. Chiboko, Chiboko, over to you, your hand is up.
Yeah, greetings, everyone.
Hey, whoa.
Yeah, I greet my my minister, Sonat Barawa. Uh, I greet my solar administrator. And my minister, uh, my honorable, Imandifa. I want to thank everyone, I'm from Omambala State. I'm so happy for today. Without wasting time, I'm picking the collar with thirty thousand AJ.
Thank you, thank you, thank you. Support Omambala State's breaking of collar, not pick collar, pick collar, answer your name, have something to take home as a proof. So that it will actually show you came here, because somebody will say, I came here, but you did not come here. But you branch somewhere. Experience, over to you. Experience, over to you.
Okay. Thank you so much, good evening all, I hope I'm coming clear.
Yes, we can hear you.
Okay. Okay, good evening, everybody. Good evening, my APM. Good evening. The Minister of Information, other protocols observed. I I'm so much happy to identify myself with a man of integrity. And the people who stand on the truth. I really appreciate the organizer of this town hall meeting. So admins of Omambala State. Is a man of integrity. I really appreciate you, sir. Um. On behalf of a bonus, we're picking the collar nodes in the sum of five thousand AJ. Thank you so much.
Thank you, thank you.
Thank you, and God bless you.
Yes, Namak, over to you, Namak, go ahead.
A very good evening to everyone, my information minister, I respect you so much. My APM, I greet you special. All the protocol observed, standing by that existing protocol. On behalf of Aludo State, Aludo is giving ten thousand AJ to support the Omambala. Our SA is giving five thousand AJ. And our deputy SA is giving five thousand AJ. Making a total of twenty thousand AJ, that is coming from Aludo. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Ogalolu Bono, thank you very much.
Thank you, my brother.
Thank you, thank you, thank you, thank you, Namak. The floor is still open, the floor is still open, please, come and pick collar, come and pick collar. Make no be say, you go another place, you can't go back, has concert, now this Omambala State Town Hall Meeting, now you come on. They go ask you, say, where is the collar? So, come and pick collar, so that you can bail yourself out when you reach out, so with evidence, with evidence to show, this is the collar that you picked, that was shared, that was prayed upon at the town hall meeting in Omambala State. Come and pick collar, come and pick collar.
When you pick collar, we give you, we give you several aligato papers, see, this year, so we're waiting for you.
Pick collar, pick collar.
When you pick collar, we give you aligato paper. To back it up.
Man, pick collar, oh, come and pick collar, we are in Omambala State Town Hall Meeting. Um, Mas, is this the first ever town hall meeting of Omambala State?
Yeah, in this current, in this current, this thing, yes, no, during the Yeah.
Before the convention. Before the convention, how many times have Omambala had town hall meeting? One or two?
One.
One, okay, so since after the convention, this is the Uh-huh.
Yeah.
Is the, the first for Omambala State, this is to show you that Omambala State are back to their feet. And they are committed to the cause that they have had before our PM was detained. So this is a strong message to every Omambala State citizens. That they should fall back to the original structure that will take us to our destination. It was on this structure that we build, it was on this structure that we gathered in Helsinki. It was on this structure and on this template and on this foundation that we gathered in Latif. It was this structure that we established all the arms of government that has existed. It was on this same structure that we all made it for the world to speak of. In this structure of BRGE was not here and the defacto government in the homeland and the defense in the homeland. The zoo wouldn't have come to the understanding of the effectiveness of the defacto government in the homeland. And the BRGE and the Befra Defense. It was on this very structure that they had that they would to promote from the defacto government in the homeland is too much. That is why they started shouting, looking for our prime minister, who is all the way in Finland. So, BRFRS, stand up, come and understand what Omambala State have come to tell you. It is a message that they are back, that they are back with full force. And that nothing will pull them behind, and nothing will stop them from doing that which they have to do. We give the mic to Emeka Emi Don. Emeka Emi Don, over to you.
Good evening, all the outside. Special greetings to our APM. To Minister of Information, to personnel of Sonat Barawa. Also greet our solar administrator. She, my people Obanago. I'm picking the collar with some of ten thousand AJ. Thank you.
Thank you, thank you, thank you. Mkechi Niere, BRGE. Mkechi Niere, BRGE. Mkechi Niere, BRGE, over to you.
Oh, is my account, so.
Yeah, go ahead, your hand was up.
Okay, so, I send out my greetings to everybody on this town hall meeting, yeah, please. I'm picking Omambala State meeting, Omambala Town Hall Meeting with twenty AJma. Thank you. Still on the queue.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you for picking collar. At least you have something to present at home. That you did not branch somewhere, as you actually came to Omambala State Town Hall Meeting, thank you. Uh, Stephen, Stephen Wajesus, Aludo SSG, over to you. Come and pick collar, Stephen Wajesus. Over to you, sir.
Greetings, Omambala people.
There were.
I want to say, I want to say, thank you for falling back and coming back strong. When every state in the forty states will actively participate in what we are doing, we will move forward. You need to go in and wake people up. Not just being a state admin on the surface, be a state admin. Rootage. Whatever you are doing for Befra to come, you see what is happening everywhere. You see how these people everywhere is crying, both they know, everybody now is saying the same thing. So this is why we should be stronger. Uh, I didn't pick, uh, come to say different thing, it's only that my Aludo Namak, when he came to speak, maybe he forgot certain things. Uh, actually, we, Aludo said they are picking collar with twenty-two thousand AJ. And ten from the states. Uh, five from the, five from the deputy, and the two from me, that is making it twenty-two AJ. God bless you all, but I want every state to wake up. That will give us joy, and that will make whatever we are doing to work. God bless you all, thank you.
Thank you, thank you, thank you, thank you, Aludo, Aludo. Thank you, and let us remind everyone that in the first quarter of twenty twenty-five, Aludo State won a good prize tag, because they did something wonderful. Thank you, thank you. We come to Pixel, Pixel eight A, Pixel eight A, over to you. Pixel eight A, Pixel is not ready, Nkiroka, over to you, go ahead, Nkiroka.
Okay. Alright, so I pick with my main accounts. I'll pick RJ with forty AJma. Yeah, combine it with my twenty, make it sixty. Yeah, I'll deposit the money with, if you say. Thank you.
Okay, sixty AJma.
Yeah, sixty altogether.
Okay.
Okay, all help Befra.
Oh, yeah.
Uh, I greet our APM. I greet Pastor Vam Vam Vam, Information Minister Sonia Parawa. Um, I'm from Omambala, and I'm a man with you with ten thousand AJ. I will redeem it from Emmy Don. Thank you, everyone, thank you.
Thank you, thank you, thank you, thank you, thank you, thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Come and pick collar, oh, it's time to pick collar, come and pick collar, pick collar. Now, Emeka, where did you, I went to Omambala State Town Hall Meeting. Now, Victor, where did you go? I went to Omambala State Town Hall Meeting. Now, Nuka, where did you go? I went to Omambala State Town Hall Meeting. Here is the evidence, here is the evidence, oh, here is the RJ. Where, here, here is the collar note, oh, come and take something, so that you can show us evidence, so that somebody will not doubt you home that you branch somewhere, uh-huh. So that you have evidence to present that you actually came to Omambala Town Hall Meeting. Where all the elders of Omambala gathered, come on. Go the number, over to you, sir.
Yes, greetings. The people of Omambala Befra. Greetings our honorable acting prime minister. Honorable information minister, deputy cabinet members, I greet you all, and the defacto government of Omambala. Greet everyone. Actually, it's good to be in Omambala, there is one thing that is one one, there is a wonders of Omambala. You know, where you got two rivers joined together, but they don't touch each other, you know? That is one of the things that brought me to Omambala, and I'm sure going to see that wonders, you know? Where you also have pyramids under the middle of the river, you know? So I also be sit there to see wonders of Omambala. Omambala Queen.
Yeah. Yeah. Any welcome, thank you so much.
Yeah, so actually, I will take the collar with twenty AJma, I will send you receipt tomorrow morning, thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you, thank you, yes, that is encouraging. Encouraging to Omambala State, as they are fully back, thank you. We come to Mevey former, Alanso admin, over to you. Mevey former Alanso admin, over to you.
Alright, good evening, everyone.
There were.
My able Minister of Information, thank you so much. I want to use this opportunity to thank my honorable admin of Omambala State. My honorable, I salute you. I thank my able APM. Mas Yogan Kere. My greeting to all the Brigi cabinets, most especially for those that are present in this very meeting. And I'm telling the order, I'm telling those that are here to extend my greeting to those that are not here now. Without taking our time. Uh, I'm picking the collar on behalf of my state with the sum of ten thousand AJ. Thank you all.
Thank you. Thank you, thank you, thank you.
Thank you very much, there were.
Thank you, my brother.
Thank you. Thank you, alright, we go to Mas, Siprano Gochuku, over to you. Siprano Gochuku, over to you, sir.
Hello?
Yes, you can hear.
Okay, 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 I greet everyone. Uh, Minister of Information, I greet you. Uh, Pastor Vavam, I greet you. My honorable APM, truly for you, truly, truly, truly. I greet everyone, all protocols observed. Uh, this is Mas Siprano Gochuku from Oruma, uh, from Odmego State. Uh, I'm picking the collar with two thousand AJ. And I'm going to pay through COA, as in uh, admin, legal statement, as in admin. I greet all of you, thank you all, God bless.
Thank you, thank you.
There were.
Thank you. Thank you, honorable number, is that the, the old hand or the new one? Is this a new hand? Over to you.
Yes, sir, yes, sir. Yes, sir. Yeah, boy, they call me a very removal, I never be honored. See, um, you see, um, I'm from Odmego State, precisely, see. Um, some features in Omambala, nature, nature, uh, gift is also part of that river, also flow in part of my Odmego State. So, and I can see that at least we have something in common with Omambala. And perhaps, I think we also never, uh, so, I want to represent my what I've listed on maybe with twenty AJma, which is fifty, forty AJma. So perhaps, if possible, I can still see it now, let me see if I can be able to make it now. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Thank you, my, I put a number, as you said, uh, Odmego and Omambala, we are we are brothers, and we also, we also neighbor. Okay. Yeah, your place to Omambala is almost the same thing. Okay? What you said is right, because I know the area. So thank you, Mas, I couldn't know.
Thank you, thank you, thank you. Thank you. Alright. Pick collar, oh, pick collar, pick collar, pick collar. Pick collar, so that you will be able to have evidence to show at home that you did not breach. Did not branch somewhere. And that you are not lying, that you actually came to this Omambala Town Hall Meeting. Come and collar. Support the collar breaking of Omambala State. Pick collar, pick collar, and answer your name. And on Sunday, being next tomorrow is our US North and South America Town Hall Meeting. They are inviting everyone to be there, tomorrow is our general weekly fundraising for our liberation in the homeland. So. We thank everyone that have picked collar, and you can continue to pick the collar as we continue. So let us go to the next item on our program. Let's go to the next item on our program. As we continue. Okay, we are on item number five now. Item number five. And in the spirit of the collar breaking, before the SA will take the floor for item number five. Let us whip the spirit of Befra from here. Um, you have something to say?
Yeah, update.
Okay, go ahead with your updates.
Yeah, Mas, totally, Aladdin Bunny. Yeah, pick the collar with the sum of fifty. Yeah, pick the cola with the sum of 50 Ajem. Thank you.
Thank you, thank you. Alright, we continue. Alright, we have Chinasso, please, your hand is up, over to you Chinasso Chris. Chinasso Chris, over to you, unmute yourself. Go ahead. Chinasso, go ahead. Chinasso Chris, speak up please. Okay, you are not ready, we can't. Okay, we have Chimeloom. Chimeloom, over to you, unmute yourself. Chimeloom, unmute yourself Chimeloom. Chimeloom, unmute yourself. Go ahead, speak up.
All here Biafra.
All here Biafra.
All here Biafra.
All here.
Uh, Admecan Maduncha. Our APM, Mazzyugn Kere, you are welcome to Mambala State. May God Almighty continue to bless you and strengthen you.
Deu.
And I pray that the the plans of enemies against the Biafra struggle shall never manifest in the mighty name of Tchouaikadjama. All the media teams, all the high executives, I welcome you all to Mambala State. Our able admin, our, our able admin, homeland, Mambala. I greet you specially, my name is Mazzy Chineloom. From Mambala State, living in India, New Delhi. I welcome you all. I and my family are bringing cola out with the sum of 50,000 Ajem. All here Biafra.
Thank you.
Deu.
Thank you.
Uh, please, we need identification or clarification on the 50,000 Ajem or Ajem?
There is Ajem.
Is Ajem?
Chimeloom, are you there?
Ajem.
Ajem. You know how to remit your payment Chimeloom?
Yes, yes, yes.
Okay, thank you. Alright, OPPO, CPH2577, unmute yourself. The user with OPPO, over to you, speak up please.
Uh, good evening Biafrans.
Deu.
Uh, I, I want to use this opportunity to greet every Biafran that are in this platform. Most especially those of you are brothers that in diaspora that are working seriously to make sure that we are being liberated from the shackle of these these are vampires from the Sahel. I also seizing this opportunity to thank my able admin Mazzy Ubanago over his efforts to make sure that we are also being liberated from the, this darkness. In order to, all protocols observed, in order to follow up with what is going on, uh, I am picking cola notes. I'm picking the cola note with the sum of 10,000 Ajem. And also, on behalf of Ummari County, we are also picking cola note with the sum of 50,000 Ajem. May God bless you all. Thank you so much, thank you so much.
Thank you, thank you, thank you, thank you, thank you, thank you. Thank you, thank you, thank you. Alright. In the spirit of the cola breaking and picking, we salute everyone. Alright, go ahead. Amande, go ahead, your hand is up.
Yeah. All here Biafra.
All here Biafra.
Yeah, in the name of Okala Fernando County, I'm picking the cola note for them for some of 50,000 Ajem.
Thank you, thank you, thank you, thank you, thank you. Chinasso Chris, unmute yourself.
Go ahead. Can you hear me right now?
Yes, we can hear you, go ahead.
Please, I'm very sorry, I, I correct something on my phone right now. Okay, I am supporting the cola note with 50,000 Ajem. I afford the receipt like tomorrow morning. Hello? Hello? Can you hear me? Hello?
Hello. Thank you, thank you, thank you, thank you. Thank you, thank you.
I afford the, I afford the receipt tomorrow morning.
What did Chinasso say, what did he say?
Hello?
Chinasso, you tell her with how much?
30,000 Ajem.
Hi.
Your discipline. I'll afford the ticket tomorrow morning.
Thank you very much.
God bless you.
Thank you, thank you, thank you. Alright, we continue. And all the media in the Chukujia Menhe, Iyedewu. Just see, he cannot run now, go line. Only one ego zero. Thank you, thank you, people of Mambala and all Biafrans that have come to support and welcome Mambala State in a grand style. Now we go to item number five, Soul Admin Opening Remark or Keynote Address. Soul Admin of Mambala State, over to you sir.
Mambala Queen.
Yeah.
Mambala Queen.
Yeah.
Mambala Queen.
Yeah.
Mambala Queen.
Yeah.
One. Deu.
Deu.
I'm over, I'm overwhelmed.
Mambado.
I am overwhelmed for your participation. I want to appreciate our indomitable APM, Ogechukunkere, Ogechika Ma, the Brigi Cabinet Members, Continental Reps, Administrators, both at home and in diaspora, Media Teams, especially you, the Minister of Information Sonia Parawa, Vam 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 and Co. I am very much happy. I recognize our Biafran Liberation Army, various committee members and others who made it possible for us to reach where we are today. Are you hearing me?
Yes, we can hear you, go ahead. We can hear you, we can hear you.
We say thank you for your resilience, commitment and hard work. We want also to appreciate our Dogu Obatobia, His Excellency, Prime Minister Mazzy Simon Eba Njoko, who brought us to the limelight through autopilot after the sale of our Supreme Leader Mazze Namde Okunkano by IPOB Nigeria and was renditioned from Kenya. We so much appreciate you even though you are on national assignment on our behalf in Finland. We sincerely appreciate and thank our Supreme Leader, the Light of Africa, Ohamadike One, Onyendu Mazze Nandu Okunkano, who opened our eyes on the injustices and the marginalization of Biafrans by the concussion called ZU Nigeria. This APM visit is a welcome development and at the right time, after Dr. Ngozi Odebese, Madame Baubau Bausaga to support and destabilize our PM's long-built effort to free Biafrans from slavery, combondage of colonial masters and their cohorts. Truly, this saga affected free flow of state administration. This simply means that some of our brethren joined Ngozi Group. Some joined Honorable Ogechukunkere Group, our APM, and some remained neutral thereby creating a lacuna in the entire leadership. Thank Chukwakikadjama, who showed us the right way to follow where laws and order are obeyed, where our BLA identified with them. Knowing fully well that a nation cannot fully stand or function without military. And that is where Honorable Ogechukunkere is leading. On this note, I want to remind us the words of our Prime Minister Mazzy Simon Eba. He said, immediately Biafra is re-declared. That is, when war starts with the ZU. He encouraged us to stand firm and defend our territory, which may last one year, two years or more, depending on the pressure of our men on ground to militarize the ZU Army and chase them away from our land. Putting into organizations the resources or funds available to re-equip or restrategize them. Therefore, I plead with us to donate generously and that no other person will do it for us than me and you who are bearing the brunt of the full army terrorism. Brethren, there is no need for much grammar. So, make your own donation and receive your blessings for God loves a cheerful giver. Long live Biafran Republic. Long live Mazze Nandekano Ohamadike, Light of Africa, our Supreme Leader. Long live Mazzy Simon Eba. Long live Mase Simon Eba Obatobiye. Our Prime Minister. Long live Oge Chukunkere. Oge Chikamma, our APM, the action man. Long live Biafra, friends and lovers of Biafra. Thank you for your extreme presence and participation. May Chukwakikabiamma bless us all. Ishe, ishe, ishe. Mase Paul Obanago, Soul Admin of Ombambala State. Nde wo no.
Nde wo Mase.
Nde wo, nde wo.
They go they go see. We go they fight. PM Simon Eka, you be the light. Don't worry must get. Freedom is our goal. If you like gossip. We go the road. Biafra freedom, now our dream true. Don't matter the challenge, we go the push through. Not them go the on. We no bull is gone. With faith and courage, we de stand hard. Osa mo de fa, lead us through the storm. Biafra land calling, let's make it our norm. Ooh. Don't worry must get. Freedom is our goal. If you like gossip. We go the road. Biafra freedom, now our dream true. Don't matter the challenge, we go the push through. Biafra freedom, now our dream true. Don't matter the challenge, we go the push through. Ooh. Oge da. We go the through the storm. We go the push through. We go the through the storm. Osa mo de fa, lead us through the storm. Biafra land calling, let's make it our norm. Gafamo de fa, lead us through the storm. Biafra land calling, let's make it our norm.
Thank you, thank you, thank you Soul Admin. For that your keynote address. And then. Biafrans appreciate you. Biafrans appreciate. The awakening of Ombambala. And their return to duty in full scale. And we look forward to seeing more exploits coming from. Ombambala State as you have enumerated. Um, Okosisi Ashan Rep, over to you, your hand is up.
Good morning, good morning, good morning everyone.
De wo.
I greet you, my Honorable Sonia Parawa. The man with too much wisdom. I greet you. I greet you, my APM, Odogu Moke. I greet you sir. I greet you all the Biafrans, I greet all the Honorable in the house. I say by God almighty bless Biafrans and bless all. Um, I just woke up and what we are doing, we thank God. The Madame Muwosba. Couldn't. You know, her plan did not work and it will never work and soon. She will see what she has done to herself. And I urge all the Biafrans, whenever you see. Our people, the people that are here now is the real Biafrans. All those that follow you Madame, Madame Muwosba. They are not really Biafrans. When you see them speak Igbo. Just look at them as in Namde Kanu always says. That they have mixed blood. So people we are, you know, contacted when they get to their mother. Get to Guausa. From there, what happened, happened. Many of them are in our mix. When you see them speaking, we think they are your blood. They are not. Ngosi herself, look at her. Tell me if she looks like a Biafran or not. She didn't. Fatima. That's what she is. So brothers and sisters, everywhere you are, please. Put your hand deeply in your pocket and do what you got to do. We are spending water, we are spending all this in the, we can't do it with ordinary hand or water. What we need is a gemma and a jet to finish the job. And we are getting there. May God bless you all. I'm just supporting with fifty a gemma for now. Thank you very much. May God bless all of us. Thanks.
You are welcome. Thank you so much, Mase.
Yeah.
Thank you so much.
Thank you, Honorable.
Thank you, thank you. Yeah. Alright, we come back to our program. And next on our item here. Number six, welcome address by SSG. SSG. Ombambala SSG. Ombambala State SSG. Where is the SSG? Is that Cosmos? Is Cosmos the SSG?
Yes.
Okay, over to you, go ahead.
Good evening, my brothers.
De wo.
Good evening.
Today, I'm highly elected for this gathering. In support. Of our homeland. And you are welcome. I start. Ombambala State Department of Government. Town Hall Meeting held on Friday. Twenty fifth April twenty twenty five via Zoom. Today, twenty fifth, twenty fifth day of April. History is being made as we host our August visitor. In the personal of Honorable Ogen Kere. The acting Prime Minister of BIRG. And the Department of Government in homeland. Ombambala State is the place setter in the Department of Government in the homeland. It was through the ingenuity of our Soul Administrator, Mase Paul Obanago. And his dedication and commitment that the first ever blueprint of the structure. And map of the homeland state was drafted and approved by the PM. And he directed all the states to use his format as a model. Ombambala State has fifteen counties and each county has seventy-five districts. Each district has three wars which totaled two hundred and twenty-five wars in the state. It has all the administrative offices effectively manned by committed enthusiastic and devoted personnel. Whose burning desire is for the quick actualization of the supreme state of Biafra. Am I coming clear?
Loud and clear, loud and clear.
Thank you. Through the doggedness and effective administration of our Soul Administrator. The state made great leaps. In the areas of evangelization. Of the hinterlands in spreading the liberation message. Now caution. The people in the state all commonly share the same caution and speak the same language. BLA. The presence of the BLA is greatly appreciated. And his presence highly felt in the homeland. The BLA has given to made inaccessible. Inaccessible lands accessible now and our mothers and fathers can now engage in their farms. Through the works of the BLA. Farm crops are no longer eaten up by Fulani headers and their cattle. The Fulanis came down to our land with the rage. After subduing many northern states such as Benue and Platin. And wants to continue their conquest. A mandate from their forefathers which was deep in the Quran at the eastern part of the ocean. They met great resistance from our formidable men and women in the BLA. The BLA punctuated their escapades and exploits. If not for these gallant men, our people would have been in high deep camps. As it is obtainable in the northern states. Let us say wuzaa to our gallant men. We praise our gallant men for doing the needful. Legas stroke lobbies. Our prayers go to the APM and his team for taking the legas first of the struggle with great commitment. We appreciate the contacts being made by the PM and his team. At reaching the members of the political class in the US. And urge them to make more in Rus. Into other notable countries. To the lobbyists, we say more grace to your abos. Do not relent until we sleep in Nigeria, the zoo. And open our eyes in our home, in our cherished country, Biafra. We enjoy all to do everything possible to see the release of our PM in no distant time. BLT. Ombambala has been taken premier position in the duration of the monthly contributions of the BLT. Our state is always among the first and highest contributors to the funds. In the medium fund raise, Ombambala State limited a million plus to the coffers of the government. In fact, in the collection of the BLT in November twenty twenty four. We tried our best and got the fifth position amongst all other states in Biafra homeland. Since this. Dunguzio Rabeze saga, people are showing a party towards the payments of BLT. Hence, the dwindling, the dwindling collections recorded recently. BSR. In the first batch of this size, we got the fourth position. In the second batch of this size, we got a million plus boost and took the third position. This size was aggressively pursued and many people participated. Assignments. Our state submitted the data requested on state and federal schools, hospitals, parks etc. in earnest. State police. We participated in the selection of individuals into the state police stroke their training. Security outfits. Due to the burning zeal of our Soul Administrator. Ombambala State was the first to form a security outfit in the Biafran land. Which the then Minister of State, Engineer Chris Udoza, tagged militia and reported to the PM. Now call to action. Our gallant men has been voicing their willingness, commitment, dedication and more sacrifices. To the cause of defending our motherland. Shall we fear them? No. I said, shall we fear them? No. And therefore calling on all our people at both room and the diaspora. To show more enthusiasm. As we launch for fun today. Let us renew our zeal again in the payment of the BLT. Because the war is not yet won. Participate actively and rigorously today as we do the launching for the liberation of our people. Long live MNEK. Long live MSC. Long live APM and his cabinet. Long live Ombambala State. Long live our independent men and women of the BLA. Long live the soon coming country, Biafra. God bless your souls. Sign. SSG Ombambala State. Thank you so very much.
Thank you, SSG. Thank you, thank you, thank you for that. Warm and concise. Report of your states.
Itamarunisi nasahunsh. Mata garunikana sahunshi. Supi kalo Simon e bakopono. Jeju esemeka na fijya. I will be your end, this is a promise. Makana woka digo kosya. Sa. Ocho waku kowe nata. Manawaku kowe wemo sano. His Excellency. Mase Simon e. Genachi gibo funu. Okwa foki jepele nu. The entire Biafran Republic Government in exile cabinet. Now Biafran de facto government in homeland. Nde Biafran Defense Forces nekelegyo. Yiwai. Happy birthday to you. Happy birthday. Omwoma nekaseki happy birthday. Happy birthday. Happy birthday to our Prime Minister Odogu. Happy birthday. Long life and prosperity. Happy birthday. The first spiritual son and disciple of Mase Namde Kanu. Arilebonundi rogi no. Amwinamugodu nyenyoba rambanye no. Special. Kake nogu. Attaka tambor. Otra de the one of Biafra land. Mejiri buago. Kanti no lela nyasino dronko. Manuku ayepetako. Obatobiye sa. Obobilo beti nyano ndiloki. Hane fezi anyacho. Di ko kaniruanyi poke nazono. You a son of a lion with dragon fire. Again de se. Ife meno follow angasano. Ki chi te no wekwe chiri. Ife na dige kwo mume long time. Kachu koki kechige meno. Odioswa bakuloko. Kogo posile gini no 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 no. Onyemba nene nache banyoko yano. Makano kuti zionfa. Gra graha nene bonakiti. Makana woke kwe dona kwe donu. Anye fodo yano. Ekele de de chukoki kaviamma. Nato narisi ke nisigi. My PM, nde wo oh. Happy birthday to you. Happy birthday. Happy birthday to you, you, you. Happy birthday. Your suffering will never be in vain, no, 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 no. Happy birthday. Chukoki keche kwa kinesi nunoki. Odogu. Happy birthday. Happy birthday to you. Happy birthday. Omwoma nekane gi. Our PM. Happy birthday. Ndi na nekane gi o. Ndi na 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 Biafra. Ndi nyeno nila nyano. Neke neki. Odogu woke merema. Anamaka chukwese. Isa wa PM birthday. Nobody else. Nobody else. Sa kasa. Odogu siroke meni. Kanyi kela chukoki kaviamma. Nobody else. My PM, happy birthday.
Thank you, thank you, thank you, thank you, Ombambala State. Thank you. From the first season of Ombambala to the last one, we say a very big thank you. And to all the visitors that have joined us today in Ombambala, we say a very big thank you. And to those that will join us later, we say a very big thank you. And those that have supported in picking the collar financially, we say a very big thank you. SSG, oh, SS, eh, please, thank you so, so much for what you have done in your address, SSG, and also the soul admin. Thank you. And then we implore every state executives to follow suit in always giving the reportage of your state, the viability of your streets, the coverage, the landmarks, the culture, the traditions, what they speak and what they say and what they practice and what they worship and your strength in the Biafran government, everything. This helps to make people understand the structural view of the Biafran de facto government in your state and in general in the homeland. So please, every state executives try to do what the Ombambala State SSG has just done now. We've been able to know how many counties, how many um wards we have and how many districts that we have in that very state now. So we implore every state admins and reps, executives to follow suit in every town hall meeting. So that, another thing we will do is going forward, we will be displaying the map of every state when the town hall meeting is on like this, so that those that came in and they don't know what the map of Ombambala State looks like, they will now get to understand when they look at it. So we need to display Ombambala State map on the screen so that people will see and know this is Ombambala State. This is what it looks like. This is where you go when you key into Mambala. This is where you will land first if you are coming in from another state. And if you're coming from this other state, this is how it will end up from where you started your journey and where you may likely end up. So we want Biafrans to start knowing more about their state. These are some of the reasons why we really, really need the town hall meeting to be ongoing so that those that don't know much about their state will start learning. It's not only when we get down to Biafran land that you get used to these things. Start getting used to it now so that our children in Daspura that we have, we can start making them understand the Biafran that we are building, the homeland, what it will look like and everything that they need to know. Okay, this is an Ombambala State map. That we hear that the capital here is Onisha. Stipulated here, Onisha. Can everyone see my screen? Can everyone see my screen?
The capital is Nando, maybe that is the old map, please check.
Ombambala State admin, look at the screen to confirm if this is your state map. The capital is Onisha.
That should be the old map.
Okay, we continue. Anything that will happen later, we will update and update. So these are the counties that you heard them called before. You see Obaro West, Obaro East, Obaro Central. You see Onisha North, you see Oye South County, you see Omowere County, Obue Omowere County, Olumbanasa County, Agulere County, Ayame Loom South County, Ayame Loom North, Anam City and so forth and so and so. So with this, you get an idea of from which part will you enter to buzz into where you actually want. This is the complete map, United States of Biafra. So when you're now looking at Ombambala from the entire map, you will know which part of the United States of Biafra states that you may likely enter to meet yourself inside Ombambala. Because there must be any X worries from left, right and so. So we thank you all and we thank the SSG for his report. At this very point, we come to our honorable and indomitable APM of the Biafran people. APM, over to you as we welcome you to the stage. Welcome to Ombambala State. They will from here, take the stage.
Thank you. Thank you, Honorable Minister of Information, Mazze Soni Aparawa. Thank you for all you're doing, you and your team. We can't thank you enough. Thank you, my fellow citizens of Ombambala. Thanks for this great opportunity that you have given the entire Biafran to come and wine and dine with fellow citizens in Ombambala. Thanks to everyone that have tuned in today. We appreciate everyone. We appreciate what you are doing in your own way, in your own capacity. My name is Mazze Ogetsukunke. The acting Prime Minister of the Biafran Republic Government in Azam. On behalf of my boss, Mazze Simon Ewa, the Prime Minister. We appreciate those before us. Our great leader, Odumewu Odjuku, accompanied by Philip Ephion. These are leaders that say tomorrow. These are leaders that over fifty years ago, they know what it is to be free people. They see it coming and they fought to save us from this mess. They were not defeated just to save life of the children of Chugu Okikabiamma, Biafrans that have been starved to death by the demonic empire of the British society. They did not feel bad about it. They starve over innocent three million Biafrans to death. No food coming in into Biafran. The blockade from the territory of Cameroon. It really hit the Biafran people so hard. So these two great leaders have no choice. Trying the best they can to work within Nigerian state to save the life of the innocent Biafrans. Fast forward. Just like our leader Philip Ephion said, if in Nigerian terrorist country, don't treat the Biafrans, right? They will rise up again and fight for their freedom. That is where we are today. Wazuruke pick it up to resurrect this good point. He came short and saw that he fall astray. He know the reason why. Maybe he's not the one to lead us to our promised land. And our leader Mazin Namdekanu pick up the mantle of which he's still fighting for us till today. We are here today is because of us. He never retreat, he never surrender. That is why we are here today, talking about our freedom. Freedom of God's people, the Biafrans. Why the Nigerian terrorists kidnapping from Kenya? His son, Ime, and pick up the mantle from there. In the person of His Excellency Mazze Simon Ewa. Mazze Simon Ewa have brought us this far. He fought very hard. He fought the enemy, the deities that have colluded to betray our leader, just like Judas Iscariot in Bible time. And again, we still have these enemies around us. We have betrayers in our, in our midst. We will do whatever we can to identify them and put a stop to this nonsense. Our Prime Minister was called for so-called questioning. I don't know what the hell EU is questioning. EU have not finished questioning the questioning that is terrorizing the entire EU. They are there colluding with a terrorist country, a terrorist Nigeria. Why their place is being overrun by Islamic jihadist bloodsucking demons? This political motivated so-called questioning. If they don't let the Biafran people go, their land will be overrun. If Finland don't let the Prime Minister of Biafran people go, Russia will invade Finland. It's a promise. And then we go back to slavery. So they can feel it. It might not be their fault. Maybe they just want to cooperate with their counterparts because they are part of the EU. EU need to wake up and stop being a demonic group or country. They need to wake up and face the reality. We are the Finnish authority, the Finnish people, to disassociate themselves from corruption. If not, corruption will be their portion. What the Prime Minister of Biafran is fighting for is just, is the just cause. Fighting for the freedom of his people. Finland have been in that situation before. When they fought hard, they fought against the bloodsucking Russians as well. Why I use that word bloodsucking is that the Russian, if you Biafrans don't really know your history, Russians collude at the time, even with Ukraine. And kill Biafrans in millions. What goes around comes around. Now that Ukraine is battling with the Russian people, I don't support either side. And we Biafrans don't support either side. We are need to let them feel the pain. Greetings to my cabinet members, the Brigitte and the de facto government, the admin reps and fellow Biafrans. Please, our we advisors, stand your ground. Be unshakable, be resilient, be white and whiter than snow. We have come too far to go back or to turn back. We have crossed the Rubicon. People of Ombambala in Biafran land, we have crossed the Rubicon. No going back. No retreat, no surrender. No going back. The journey will never be easy. It's not gonna be easy. Our enemies, we always want to plant the seed or divide and rule among us, even among the chosen ones. We have to be careful. We have to be awakened. We have to know that we are in the night hour. We have to love ourselves and set our eyes on the prize. And focus, fight for what matters. The Nigerian terrorist country. They always come with this narrative to destroy the Biafran mind and to prove to the international community that we Biafrans don't deserve to fight for our freedom. That is why you see the fake news flying around from the Nigerian gutter media, from Daily Times to other bunch of shit hole newspaper. Because they have played all the Alaska, none is remaining. They have no more card to play. Nigerian terrorist country is burning fire from north to southwest because Biafran land is not part of Nigeria. Everywhere in that shit hole country, there is chaos. Country that I don't know it left and right. Few days ago, on their gutter shit hole media with their lies, they're talking about the Prime Minister of Biafran Mazze Simon Ewa would be extradited, that all the paperwork being done is all false. It's all propaganda. What a shame to a whole shit hole country like that. What a shame to people that identify themselves as Nigeria. It's embarrassing to them, not to us. We expected that. We know that, we know that is who they are. Nigeria is a failed state. That is the same reason why our leader Mazin Namdekanu being our great, our great Biafran after our Lord Jesus Christ. Because I believe he believe in Yeshua, believe in Jesus Christ, our Lord as well. He is one of the greatest prophets, prophet of our time, who have prophesized things that have happened in that country called Nigeria. When he said that the terrorist jihadist bloodsucking demons are coming to invade our land, at the time, people are asking question. People doubt him. But it's happening right before our eyes. He's fast approaching. In few number of days, he will be appearing in the court of our oppressor again. We know what we usually do when he appears in court. That is sit at home. Biafran land will be under lock and key on the twenty nine and second and 2nd of May and 6th of May, 2025. Biafraland will be under lock and key because the leader of Biafran is going to court. So we Biafrans will be in court. Because when they hold Mazin Nandikan, they hold the entire Biafran. We know what to do, that very day we'll be doing it. We will not stop loving him. We will not stop being on his side because we know he's fighting for us. And before his court date, the same useless shit hole country called Nigerian terrorists, they already start their propaganda. Trying to see what they can tie him to. We don't have ESN in Biafraland. That era of ESN is gone. What we have is Biafra Liberation and BDF. They want to resurrect so-called ESN. We don't have nothing like ESN. They came up with this stupid cheap propaganda about it with a teenager that I don't know if he's even up to 12 years old. Biafrans at any time, we have never armed under age. Oh, this is how they want to put everything and blaming on the leader of these great people of Biafran. And we have the same the escort Christopher Musa, the Chief of Defence Staff of the useless demonic satanic shit hole. I'm not holding my word back. Nigeria is a gutter shit hole country. Nigeria is evil country. And the ruler of that country is a shit hole evil human being. Tunubu is a shit hole person, a terrorist, a head of terrorists. Shetiman is a co-founder of Boko Haram. And Nigeria sponsor this group of terrorists. We condemn them. We condemn their activities. That is why day by day we invade the useless country that if I have the opportunity, if I can do it all on my own, I will do it, I will burn it down. If you give me matches, you give me whatever that can bring that country down, and we pour, whether you call it fuel, corrosion, whatever, we'll put, set it on fire, burn that shit hole down. But that country don't deserve to be among countries of all nation. Country that kill its own. Look at what happened in Lagos when the so-called Nigerians are protesting with their flags. And this shit hole country order the military to shoot all the innocent people protesting in Lagos. A country that kill its own and suck its own blood. A country that can't provide you basic amenities, regular light, electricity, that even the poorest country on earth today have a steady light. A country that have no sewer system, no good education, no good hospital, nothing good coming from that nonsensical shit hole place. A country that breed criminals. All over the world, Nigerians have been tagged and profiled as criminals, fraudsters. Wherever you go and you identify yourself as a Nigerian, whoever doing business with you or having any dealing with you will be really careful. Because Nigeria breed criminals. A former presidential candidate and a former governor called Peter Obi. A man who work with our enemy, a man who have sold his soul to the devil. A man who have no conscience, an evil man called Peter Obi. Peter Obi acknowledged that Nigeria breed criminals. And he forgot he is one of the criminals that Nigeria have bred. Nigeria is a criminal country and we always remain a criminal country. A former president, good luck Jonathan, made it clear. Nigeria is not a country. Never a country. It's a country created for British to make you and make all the resources from your land until you have nothing. They create that useless country to divide and rule and to conquer you. They never want unity in that useless geographical area. Shame unto Britain. They will pay. They will pay. They will pay and indirectly they are paying. Please send a message to Christopher Musa. After our re-declaration, they thought it's over. Why they have this shit hole lady called Ngozi working with them? They thought they can bring this great movement down. They thought it's over. Throughout December, throughout January, throughout February, Christopher Musa was granted, granted interview all over the world. Thinking after they have called our Prime Minister for so-called questioning is over. Send this message to Christopher Musa. It's not over yet. We cannot abandon Biafran. We cannot leave our land. We Biafrans are Christian. We practice Judaism and traditionalist. We are not Muslim. We can never be Islamized. It will never happen. If they like, they can plant all the whole subo in the world in our midst, all the whole accountability group. Everything that can destroy us, it can never happen. If they are not careful, time is coming. We will teach them a lesson. We will colonize them. If they are not careful, what we have never done to any nation, Biafra have never invaded any nation, any country. Biafra have never colonized anyone or forcefully taken anything from anyone if they are not careful. If they are not careful. Christopher Musa starts speaking. Starts saying the truth. How the Wotu Wotu promise that we have reactivated. I know they are feeling the heat. But they're so ashamed to come out and let the world know that we are dealing with them in a daily basis. They come to kill us and we defend ourselves. We defend our land. We are defending our land from the hand of the jihadist terrorists. We are defending our land so they won't be able to rape our women, children, overrun us and take over our land. They are coming with every strategy. Christopher supposed to be a Christian name, but I don't understand what going on here. Christopher Musa, shame unto you. I see you are getting darker and darker every day. Your evil will catch up on, catch up upon you. All these enemies. I can't wait when the news will come that the village of Obasanjo is being visited by these, they are breed jihadist terrorists that is sponsor. Obasanjo is part of those that sponsor Boko Haram. Boko Haram, what's going on? Don't you Boko Haram want to go visit your boss, Obasanjo? Don't all these Islamist jihadist terrorists know their villages? Where they from? They need to go say hi to their creator, their maker. But Biafraland will swallow all our enemies. Both the enemies within, the enemies outside. All the subotwa in Biafraland, from the Eze to the Ohanese, to the illegitimate governors, Biafraland will deal with all of you. It's a promise. As long as we are alive fighting for this freedom, we will fight to the end. We never forget. If I can go show you the camera in our office, there is where we have this picture with the words there that we would never forget what happened to us, how they killed over 5 million Biafrans. The pain they have flitted on us, we will never forget. It's a promise. Every day, they are killing Biafrans, harvesting Biafran's organ, shipping it to China. That brings me to China. China, you all should go to hell. Leave Biafran land alone. China have over 1 billion people. Is that not enough for you? Your land, Biafraland is not even up to 10% of your land. China is fighting hard to get Taiwan back. They should go back and mind their business over there. We don't want to learn Chinese, a language that sound like we don't want that. We have our language that goes this way. That is the language we want. We don't want you to come with this go weird. Go to hell with your language and leave a hell out of our land. Get off from Biafraland. Any property you Chinese succeed in purchasing in Biafraland is non-avoided. Any document under the Chinese authority of any property after Biafra have been re-declared is non-avoided. If the Chinese people want to do business with Biafra, they should contact Biafra Republic Government in Eze or Biafra Republic Government in the homeland. Where the Biafra Republic Government will be part of. We will negotiate and have a handshake. Because when Biafra is fully restored, we invite any company, any country that doesn't align with us, we'll be invited. So for the Chinese government, trade with caution. Don't act like dumb. Don't act deaf. Don't act like you people are not seeing. I believe the Chinese government already knew that Biafra is re-declared. And they are following, they are seeing everything that is happening. The airport that they trying to buy in the former Enugu state, they should disease. They should disease and get a hell out of our land. If they want to do genuine business, they need to come through the rice, through the right source, through the rightful owners, through the people that govern the land, that own the land, not through the Nigerian. Any foreign investor that want to do business in Biafraland, they need to align with the Biafra Republic Government in Eze. And we have, we're going to identify something that I don't think we Biafrans have really pay key attention to. That is how our enemy operates. Because if you don't identify how your enemy operates, you won't be able to defeat them. You won't be able to be on a lot to know what to do. The people of the Fulani, we know they always have an agenda. And all over Africa and the Sahel, they have been evicted from different country. They don't really have a country of their own. Because right from origin, they are wanderers. They are nomadic people or domandik. They are people that don't have a settlement and never want to. And one of their grandfather called Ostmadam Fodou, looking for where to conquer and where they will have as their own. They choose the not way before the Amaga mission. Then after the Amaga mission, they plan of overrunning the whole entire country. And for them to succeed, they will have to conquer the whole Nigeria from the Dudua to the Biafrans. They come with different ways of doing that. Religion. First of all, they will Islamize you. And before they Islamize you, they will put division between the indigenous, between the people. While that process is going on. They will have to install a leadership among that community. And whoever they install will be somebody who they have brainwashed. Somebody who they can manipulate, control and tell what to do. Through that person, just like Hope Ozadimwa. They have different means they do that. Through that person, they will make sure they put division within the community. They will put in fighting between brother and sister. That is the system of divide and rule. They are working on that, but we will not let them succeed. That is why we will fight and fight until Biafra is totally liberated. We have a lot of them, we have identifying. We also identify a lady by name that claimed to be Ngazi Orobizi, of which we believe that is not who she is. And we have one thing that the Fulani use in common wherever they go. One is whistle. They walk around with concealed whistle. Two, they always walk around with this head of stick for shafar the floor. And they also walk around with a small battery operated transistor radio. They know the frequency to listen for instruction of jihad call. They always walk around whenever they want to conquer a territory. Like what is happening in somewhere in Emo State. Former Emo State, I think is happening around the Okewin. You will see where they have, they will write something on the wall, direction. That is why when this lady called Ngazi Orobizi talk about this whistle. Fulani are jihadists. Jihadist is a call holy war that targeted at non-Muslims. That is regarded or called infidel. That means they call you and are infidel. As long as you are not a Muslim. They never love you or have a regard for you. In the Muslim region. Anyone that kills an infidel is promised 72 veggies. Now you know the reason behind the slaughter non-Muslim without conscience. I don't know if they are Lord God that they worship that say go and kill, kill. If they have increased it from 72, that's why they like to kill and kill. And we remember Osmadam Fodiu with the ideology. Before 1804, that process have started and after 1804. The contest began, the Fulanis were headed and the nomadic move from place to place. In search of pasture as well as the land. They can make theirs. Wherever they land, they want to settle there. They want to kill everything there. They want to take over. That is exactly what they are doing today. The typical Fulani, as they move, carry on three major items. Amongst others. The whistle. The sound whistle that Ngazi is trying to introduce to Biafrans. That tells you she is a bona fide Fulani woman. The head of stick for the shafar in the floor. A small battery operated transistor radio. They know the frequency to listen to for instruction of when to strike. What to do. And they speak that their language that only them understand. So for Ngazi to order virus infected whistle. So that when blown by our people. Will kill them. So what this lady is doing. Is how the we, how the Fulani will identify who is Biafra. So they can kill Biafrans. And this whistle. Is already, Ngazi already planned. These infected whistles with virus that will kill Biafrans. Because she have tried that in so many ways. That is why my fellow Biafrans, please, from Oman Barra to all Biafran land. Never accept that whistle. Fulanis are known by carrying whistle. So how Fulani people in the bush will come out, finish those that did not die and then occupy our land. They have been trying everything they can from Ibu Bago. They are not succeeding. Every day they keep coming with different idea. How Biafrans will be killed. Every day, every day. Ngazi is coming with ideas. How the Fulani will identify Biafrans and kill Biafrans. Ngazi tweeting about giving Biafrans whistle is not a coincidence by advice. She has been using caterpillar, sapling, arrest commanders and through recruiting to kill our people. She has also planned massacre of people in Dasporan. With the arrangement to take them back from America and Europe. So on touching down the zoo army will kill our people. Please, can everybody ask those in the cabinet of this breakaway group. Have they purchased their ticket? Have they made the arrangement from Europe and America? The plane they would be using? Who is going to be in the front seat? Is it a former Diana? Uh, Ague? Are they ready to come back to Nigeria? Because Ngazi promised them, she is bringing them back to Nigeria. So I promise them upon arriving to their own Nigeria because they are not coming to Biafran land. That is a plan for her to hand them over to the Nigerian country. For them to be killed. I haven't heard her talk about that arrangement again. The shutout plane seem to have loophole. Not enable the more accomplished her mission for her Fulani relatives. So now she has ordered this whistle with tracker chips. Ngazi want to give Biafra whistle with tracker. Remember, Hope Ozadimwa have, uh, he have aligned himself with the terrorist Fulani people. He's working for the Nigerian country. Remember when Hope Ozadimwa promised of telephones? What happened with the phones, the cell phones that Hope Ozadimwa gave out there? The user to track the Biafran people and kill Biafrans and arrest many. Now Ngazi have come with her own plan. This whistle, we have a tracker as well. And any Biafra, please, don't listen to this. You have been warned. We want to see that you see Biafra. We don't want you to be killed. We want you to be alive. If you take this whistle from Ngazi and her group. You will be tracked by that whistle. If the Nigerian terrorist country have, you know, able to identify you, they will lock you up or kill you. Because they will know you are following Biafra. They will know you are fighting to free yourself. This is another plan. Do you know what 5 million whistle is? That is like killing another 5 million Biafrans. We are crying about the over 5 million that was massacred and starved to death. 1967 to 1970. And Ngazi want to carry out another 5 million. We will not allow that happen. Please, Biafrans, ignore Ngazi with her plan. She don't meant well for us. Please, no one should accept these whistles. Or if you decide to do. Write your will to some, maybe the Briggy. If you have a gem or a gemma, write your will to Briggy so we can use it to save other life. If you know you, you don't want to live. If you believe your life don't matter. After this warning, you want to go and buy, you want to go and take the whistle that Ngazi will use and track you. She and her people, her group that she's working for. Please write your will. If you have millions, billions there, please. We need that a gem and a gemma so we can use that to save life. Those that want to live. We believe that the spirit of Biafra is dealing with her now. She and her group. This is why she reveal what she wants to before she does it. So it is for us to read in between the lines. As we look through her. Like a glass house and see she is evil. The good thing about her is that she always reveal to us about what she is going to do. She always reveal. So we just have to be smart. She do reveal everything she want to do. When she said she's making arrangement uh, with an airline from US and Europe. To, you know, for her gullible ones, her followers. And this airline is not taking her followers to Nigeria, uh, to Biafra, rather to Nigeria. You know what that means. And some are still following her. Ngazi, we want to be second queen Amina. Unfortunately, newsflash for her. She is Halimatu Abu Bakr. Ngazi Orobizi, she is Halimatu Abu Bakr. Please, fellow Biafrans, let's buy her this opportune time. And let be wise. Let be vigilant. Let be resilient. Let shine our eyes. And please, if you know where these Chinese people are coming to buy. If anyone can pass message anyhow, the media, whatever we can do, we'll be sending a public statement to notify them and the world. They should leave our land. We don't want to be conolized again. We have been through the rut. And we don't want to be speaking language that we don't understand. Speaking in tongue of what we don't know. The language we know is with language we know is the language we know is the language we know is that is the language we know. Is the language we know. We don't want the language of hey, no. Biafra support your liberation before you get conolized again. Biafra found your freedom. Wake up, stand up. All your enemy in your territory. Do whatever you can, fight back. Fight for your freedom. Find your freedom. Defend your land. They have collude. They have collude so that our leader Mazin Nambekano will not come out. They have collude so they won't release our prime minister. But then we fail. Anywhere you identify your enemy, pier to him. P I are here if you can. If you can't, leave it for those that are working for us. Leave it for our angels. If you have the gemma, support your freedom. Freedom is worth fighting for. Thank you from here. Thank you from here, Ndewo.
Etamarunisina Sohantata. Mata Garunikina Sohansi. Supi Kualosaimone Bakobono. Jeju Esemeka Napija. I will be your end, it's a promise. Makana woka di go kosiya. Sa. Ocho wakoko we nata. Mana wakoko we we wosono. His Excellency. Mase Simonapa. Genachigi bofu nu. Okonfokichi pele nu. The entire Biafran Republic government in exile cabinet. Now Biafran de facto government in homeland. Nde Biafran Defence Forces snake legyo. Yibwe. Happy birthday to you.
Happy birthday.
Umum Biafran say happy birthday.
Happy birthday.
Happy birthday to our Prime Minister Odogwu.
Happy birthday.
Long life and prosperity.
Happy birthday.
The first spiritual son and disciple of Mazin Namdekanu. Avirebonundi Rogino. Amwina mugo du nenye ambada mbe no. Special. Gakano Gu. Ataka Ta Bo. Ochoa de the one on Biafra land. Mejdi Buagoo. Kendi no lela nyasino di ronko. Manu gua anye petako. Obato Bie. Sa. Obobilo betzinyenundi logi. Hane fezi anya chon. Digo ganiru anye pokina zono. You are son of a lion. With dragon fire. Again, eh de. Say. Ife meno follow Bangasano. Kichi te no wekwe chili. Ife na dige womume long time. Kachu koki kechi ke meno. Ocho sawa bakulok. Kogo buzi le gini nu 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 nu. Onyemba nene nache banyoko yano. Makano kuti ziova. Gra graha nene bonan kiti. Makana woke pandona pandono. Anye fodo yano. Ekele de dechu koki kabiama. Na do na risike ni seki. My PM, Ndewo O. Happy birthday to you.
Happy birthday.
Happy birthday to you, you, you.
Happy birthday.
Your suffering will never be inferno, no, 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 no.
Happy birthday.
Chukoki kechi kwaki nezi nonoki. Odogwu.
Happy birthday.
Happy birthday to you.
Happy birthday.
Umum mane kelegi. Our PM.
Happy birthday.
Ndi nana kelegi o. Ndi nona na Biafran.
Happy birthday.
Ndi nyeno nilanya nu. Neke neki. Odogwu woke marama. Anamaka. Chukwese. Isawa PM birthday.
Nobody else.
Nobody else.
Sa.
Nobody kanyi magotano. Odogwu ziroke meni. Kanyi kala chukwaki kabiama. Nobody else. My PM, happy birthday.
Thank you, APN.
Thank you. Thank you, Honorable Minister of Information, sorry I'm calling you off. Monday sit at home is not negotiable. Monday sit at home is not negotiable. And I hope those that know Pitamba, Pitamba, Aga Piagihien. Pitamba, anyone that is mortgaging Biafra land, Biafra land is not for sale. Anyone that we identify, identify. We will deal with that person from now till Biafra will lead to eternity. If you identify such time in ruling, ah nah, by India, little man, for real. Pia, everybody on Piaable. They have take us for ride for too long. Pitamba, A Nugu is not for sale. Go to hell. Make it war work. Thank you.
Thank you, APN. Thank you for your speech. Um. Omambala State appreciate the presence of all Biafrans that attended today's town hall meeting. Omambala State as well appreciate the entire BRGI officials that have made it to this town hall meeting. Member State is grateful to the resilient nature of the Biafra Defence Forces. Omambala State is grateful to the de facto government of the homeland and to all Biafrans who are making the watches of Biafra to be very, very viable. Omambala State is very happy to have everyone here present today. APN has just spoken and then the program continues. So we go to the next item on our program and that is fundraising, donations, support, question and answers, and whatever you have to say. So the floor is open to everybody. The floor is open, fundraising is on, donation, support, question and answers, support the APN's visit to Omambala State Town Hall Meeting. The floor is open, the floor is open, the floor is open. Here's a good number, over to you. Your honest op.
Yeah, thank you so much, Honorable Minister for Information, Communication. Yes, I just want to say, um, thank you to a right Honorable Minister, APN. Maso Ngenkere. Thank you for this wonderful speech. Thank you so much, you are actually, uh, yes, doing it without minding who's us is God. We don't, um, uh, political correct, we speak it the way it is. Those who are fighting to save their lives are don't observe a red line. Um. You see, uh, before I go on, I want to address about this speech with your twenty A Jema, making it fifty A Jema, we'll be able to send the receipts tomorrow morning. There's already money here anyway. Uh, total money, I will send the receipt of fifty A Jema. So, um, if I have something to say, if I'm permitted to go ahead with it now, oh.
Yes, go ahead, go ahead.
Thank you so much, thank you so much. Yes, um, fellow Biafrans, um, I want to thank us for all our efforts, those who are supporting, um, our Defence Forces, our, uh, gallant men and women who have vowed not to betray Biafra land, who have vowed not to be bribed. When we listen to our general, uh, gentle, you will see that, uh, that sincerity, that honesty is eyes and then I don't see any reason why any genuine Biafran will not support, will not be, we have money in the bank, why our people are dying, our men are defending our lands, it cannot provide logistic for them. I want you to know that it is our duty, task, freedom on our shoulder, making sure that they have everything needed to serve us well. Okay, yes, and we must do it with every seriousness because there's no time. We shouldn't wait when the enemy gain ground, then you bring that money out, then you go and do it yourself. Let us do it for us. And we must understand, when a government need money, we need to make it. Because of, remember when this evil woman came in? Okay, had he been with answer to that money needed at that time, she wouldn't have penetrated. However, I tend to quote that she unable to assess or classify their structures. Again, I'm urging, I'm just asking our governments, please, you see what Saludo is doing to innocent? That is hard to frustrate, they're trying to frustrate him. Uh, 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 when the Flandes using Saludo, he has used him to attack our, our deities by claiming he fighting native doctors, but some people who are blind will not understand. Okay, yes, now he's going after innocent. So please, my governments, uh, thank you so much for your works, uh, officials. I am suggesting if some of this our people should be secretly, um, visited, because some of them may be being deceived by misinformation because of propaganda that is Ngozi and the other agents disseminating. So if some of our people can visit some of our big men, those who we deemed are true Biafran and may do something, go close to them and explain things to them, perhaps they will support what we're doing. Thank you so much, that is what I want to suggest. And also.
Please, uh, thank you very much, you just raised important issue here. You see what Saludo did to innocent? Kind of cry a little bit about it, but really frustrated seeing a Biafran destroying a Biafran uh, business like that. And if Biafran have, you know, regained her sovereignty, somebody like Mazie Innocent would be competing in the top high level, like Ela Musk. That's something they don't know. You know, it's heartbreaking when we see the billionaires and billionaires in Biafra land why they are not stepping up. But we pray that we, you know, join what we are doing, we are not asking them to come here publicly and support. They can do it secretly. You know, we are not the first. There are countries that have, you know, uh, go through this path before. And the, and the billionaires and billionaires support, uh, you know, the freedom of their country or their people. So people like Mazie Innocent and others, why not? They are Biafrans. They are still our brothers, our fathers, our uncle or whatever, you know, uh, you might call it. Please, if you know anyone or identify a true Biafran that really want us to chase these enemies from our land, then want to put a stop to this divide and rule, that is the system. Now they succeeded in, uh, Ibetu, how many, how many people really hear about Ibetu Smith and all that? They are going after innocent. Alanon Yema is just right there gallivanting, they will go after all of them one after another. Kedu, for how long till we wake up? If you know anyone, please kindly let us know. Or they can just go to the website. Asia Abakata Kanjuma Mni, Abofu. So when we all, uh, you know, we all need to come together and do this once and for all. Thank you.
Thank you, APN. Thank you. We continue, the floor is open for question and answers, the floor is open for donations, contributions, and whatever you have to say. Reach out to the mic.
And let me use the opportunity as well, you know, anytime we have a town hall meeting, I always want to use the opportunity to address Biafrans properly. For those accountability groups saying we have not done nothing, we are not proactive, we are not doing this or that, then you need to as well ask yourself question. How much, how are you supporting? Are you part of the prayer group? Are you supporting spiritually, physically or otherwise? We need your support with whatever you support the BDF with. That's where you will be seeing what, what, everything going. But I must tell you the truth. Yes, a lot that is going that is social media, the zoo terrorists don't carry it because they don't want the world to know how we are dealing with them. And if you're a Biafran, they're talking about accountability, you don't do this, you don't want, uh, you ask questions, how, what are we doing? We don't fight this way, we don't fight that way. My fellow citizen, what are we going to use to fight? What are we going to use to get this done? A J, A Jema. So you that is asking for accountability, you as well have to accept the responsibility that you are not doing your own part. And for those that are saying they will not contribute because they don't like this face here, because they don't like the name because it's Ogetukunkiri, or because they don't like the way I put my tie, or because they don't like the way I speak the English or the Biafran language or whatever. Am I the Biafran you are fighting for? Am I the Biafran that you're supposed to be fighting to get, uh, your freedom? We are all fighting for Biafran to be free. We are not here to fight because it's Mazio Ogetukunkiri is the APN. Because since it's this, since it's that, you are not going to contribute. You are doing yourself. You are doing the entire Biafran people. Please, it don't matter whoever in the seat, support that person. Because whoever in this seat that I am is no longer Mazio Ogetukunkiri. It's Biafran. When Mazin Namdekanu will be going to court on the twenty sixth, who you see going to the court there is not Mazin Namdekanu, it's Biafran. If it is just Mazin Namdekanu, they will free him. They don't want to free him because they have not denounced Biafran because he still identify and believe that he will fight until we are free. So when he at that court, it's Biafran that is here. Please, don't hold back because Mazio Ogetukunkiri is in control of this or that, for that reason you will not support. You are not doing us good. Please, support from the bottom of your heart and believe that we will use whatever you support with, carry out the duty with good faith. And the day that I, they sworn me in, in this position, I raise my hand and I take oath that I will serve faithfully to the best and of my knowledge, I will do everything I can, it never changed. The day that I was inaugurated into the finance team, which almost six, seven members are there, dissenting, I took an oath as well that everything I'm going to do will be as pure and right. So, Biafrans, you are not fighting to save Mazio Ogetukunkiri. Your donation is not for Mazio Ogetukunkiri. It is to save the land of Biafra. Our leader, our Prime Minister, where he is, he is not there because of what his name apply as Simon Eba. He is there because of Biafra. He represents Biafra. The day he will be appearing in court, who you are seeing, you can see it physically as Mazie Simonapa, the Prime Minister, but spiritually, who appear in that court is Biafra. Please, don't hold back. Support the way you'll be supporting when the Prime Minister is here. We don't have accountability of this or that. It never complained, everything moving smooth, everything is just right and pure. What difference now, what changes? Is it this face that's changed? But that have not stopped me from talking about Biafra. That have not stopped me from taking the gospel of Biafra to Washington DC, having meetings, telling them why we need to be free, updating them our pro, about our progress. When I'm there, I'm not there as Mazio Ogetukunkiri. I'm there as a Biafran. I represent Biafran. Please, support, support. Thank you.
Thank you, APN, thank you. The world is loud enough for the wise except those that were coarse before they found themselves into the Biafran cycle. They will never listen, not understand, for those that their brains are working, the message has been delivered. Um, BRGI USA Not Insult. Over to you, sir.
Thank you, sir, thank you, sir, Minister of Information.
You can start your, if you need your camera, you can start your camera.
Yes, yes. And thank you, uh, again. Um. I thank my APN for that powerful speech that he delivered. He's always delivering some very, very powerful speeches. I also salute uh, our leader Mazin Namdekanu. Uh, I keep him in prayer and I still pray that our Most High will give him the strength he needs from day to day, from minute to minute, from hour to hour. And I also salute uh, our Prime Minister, uh, Mazie Simon Eba. The Most High will also strengthen him while we follow his footsteps. Um. Now, I thank the Omam, Omambala, I hope I'm saying it's Omambala uh, State for inviting the AP, our APN uh, in this town hall. And, um, and this is an opportune time for those of us who love Biafra to tune in and be part of this town hall meeting. Uh, I've been, uh, I'm at work right now, so I really can't spend a lot of time. But, um, I, I like to pick the color knot with fifty A Jema and I like to. And I'd like to also uh show my appreciation for that speech my prime minister made with a hundred ajemma. And that would be a hundred and fifty ajemma. And I'm gonna forward the receipt to my Minister of Information. Greetings to uh Deputy Minister of Information. And thank you all the members of the cabinet in the house. I salute you all. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, our honorable Red. Thank you so much. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Good evening from here.
Yeah, good evening, sir.
There were. Thank you.
All right, we continue. The floor is open to everyone. You can ask your question, your contributions, your donation, your ideas. Support Omambala Town Hall Meeting. With whatever you have and whichever way you feel. The mic is open to everyone. The mic is open.
Biafran nation you defend. With love and spirit you won't bend. Strength and courage in your heart. From Ghana to Nigeria, we all star. Thank you, Simon Eba, we adore. With you living we soar, Simon Eba, the good guy. Raise our flags, our touches sky. Biafran loving every beat. With your spirit, we can't be beat. We fight with passion very strong. To you, our love will always belong. Ghana joins in singing praise. Your name in cheers we all raise. You fight with passion very strong. To you, our love will always belong. Ghana joins in singing praise. Your name in cheers we all raise. In brightest day or darkest night. Simon, you are guiding light. Together we'll find our way. With your spirit here to stay. Biafran's heart, it beats with pride. Simon Eba by our side. No matter what it takes, we'll strive. With you, our future comes alive.
Thank you, thank you, thank you. Omambala State Admin, over to you, your honor is up, sir. Omambala SA, your honor is up, over to you. Omambala SA, admit yourself, we can't hear you if you're talking.
Uh thank you very much, my Minister of Information. Uh I don't know how to thank the, our wonderful PM for the wonderful speech. APM, we appreciate you so much. You and your bridge members and cabinets. I am very much happy to have your people in our town hall meeting. Uh let me go straight to the point. On behalf of Omo Obanam, they have ordered their receipts, they paid forty thousand naira to support our men on ground. Forty thousand ajemma. Forty thousand, Omo Obanam, you know, Omambala, Agulera County. That's what I want to announce. Thank you, sir.
Thank you, thank you, thank you, thank you, thank you. Thank you. I think we are drawing close to the end of this um town hall meeting. The floor is open to anyone that has something to say before we draw the curtain. The floor is open, the floor is open. And um SA, please, um use this uh this time to give your foot of thanks to all Biafrans that have keyed into this uh meeting today. Over to you, SA. Eh Moses Ossisoma, over to you, your honor is up.
My fellow Biafrans.
Eh SA, wait, wait, Moses Ossisoma is speaking. Wait for Moses Ossisoma. Moses Ossisoma, go ahead.
It's not coming.
Good evening, Biafran. Uh Information Minister, I greet you. APM, good evening, sir. Please uh um we have a donation coming from Adnebu State. One hundred and Rika, two thousand ajemma. Then Marzi Moses, five thousand ajemma. There were.
Thank you, thank you, thank you, thank you. Uh Gladys Mabuzo, over to you.
Uh good evening, my people.
There were.
Um I'm Gladys Mabuzo, from Ohio, United States. Um I'm going to use a hundred dollars or hundred ajemma to welcome APM to my state. And and uh I have uh um one uh request. Is it possible to list on the side of the map, of the state maps, the cities and towns that are in the counties or so? Because so many of us are not sure. But not a, I'm not very good with geography, but I know I'm from Omambala, I'm from Obusi. So Obusi should be around the Omambala. That's my request. Thank you, everyone.
Obusi is in uh Ikemba State. Ikemba is
Oh, Obusi is Ikemba, you see I'm not, not one of my other people's states. Okay. No problem. That's good. Obusi that is so close to Onisha, I see Ikemba. Okay.
We started from Obaru, Onisha.
Uh huh.
Oy, these are the former or Anambran Motz Nateria Zone is now the state, Omambala State.
Okay.
Of central is Ikemba State.
Okay.
And the south is Odumegu State. That's how it's made.
Oh, wonderful. Okay. Well, thank you. Ikemba is my state. Okay. That's good. Um uh should I send my receipt to Ohio Admin?
You can pass to Indian Admin.
Indian Admin? I mean, I'm in the United States. Marzi Sunny, wow. Hello?
Sunny, Sunny Director, please. Sunny Director, wait to pass the receipt. Can't you get India Admin?
I don't have information for Indian Admin. I'm in Ohio.
Oh, you're in Ohio. Pass the receipt to your state admin.
That's what I thought. That's okay. That's
Hundred ajemma, right?
Yes.
Yeah, thank you.
You're welcome.
Amaka is the Ohio State Admin.
Yeah, I know.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
All right, we come to Yunis. Yunis Uchachi, over to you. Tomorrow is our general fundraising. So if you have something to say, reach out to the mic now because we're rounding up. Yunis, go ahead.
Yeah, good afternoon from my side, everyone. I want to thank you all for what you all have been doing, your consistency, I second to none. I just want to, without wasting time, say thank you. Thank you to uh APM. Your speech was wonderful and, you know, uplifting. Um thank you for standing strong for our prime minister. And I want to also appreciate all the cabinet members. God bless you. And to uh Omambala brethren, thank you once again for hosting today. I want to support on behalf of my uh Kanada uh family with fifty ajemma. Thank you.
Thank you, thank you, thank you, Honorable Uchachi. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Interwom.
Uh Nenaya Okereke, admit yourself, over to you.
Good evening, good Biaf- uh good evening, good Biafrans. All protocol observed. I'm supporting Omambala today with thirty ajemma. Already I've sent the receipt to you. The wise one, Marzi Sunny Abara, on your WhatsApp page. Thank you. May Okike bless us all. Day one and good night.
Thank you, there were.
Thank you, thank you. Well, no, 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 thank you. Thank you. Do we have more hands as we round up? We want to relieve Biafrans so that um tomorrow they can key in again. And on Sunday again, they can key in. We don't want you to be weary. And we must appreciate everyone that have keyed into Omambala's welcome service. Yes, because it is like a welcome service back from the town hall. Okay, in the absence of um no hand, um Omambala, SA, over to you for your boot of terms.
Thank you very much, sir. My honorable minister. I want to thank each and every one of us, the Omambala State and its executives. We wish to express their sincere heartfelt gratitude for honoring our invitation and for gracing this occasion en masse. We thank you, that Chukoke Keka Biamma, who made it possible for you to leave your various engagements, to participate in this town hall meeting. We lead you back safely to your various homes in peace, love and joy. Ishe? 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 Thank you.
Thank you, thank you, thank you. And as um we draw the curtain, I have something to explain to Biafrans.
Okay, go ahead.
And this will make a part of my end of the program. Um Biafrans, just look at the video we are going to play on the screen. And then I'll say something as we draw the curtain. Fire. Uh Allah wa anangosi. Allah wa anangosi. Here, I own a governor of Ezani, under Ngozi, USP. United States of Biafran. United States of Biafran Ngozi, not really the United States of Biafran, United States of Nigerian Ngozi. So here, I own the governor, the governor of Ezani. Can the zoo, the zoo, the zoo, Jajapari, you know, no? There's a Ngozi, Allah meant to hear. There's a Ngozi, Allah meant to hear. You see, I know, monona, I am Allah meant to do here. Call Awaliho Genu. The idiot, Gaga Shu, we are not as governor, governor. Who not governor, can't party here. Let the zinc and the do property, and the do property, no, no, not governor. Never did, never did do, never did do, never did do. Never did do, never did do, yeah, why? Yeah, why some prove, complete proof, don't be a dollar. The thing, the thing who uh the thing who metrotized. There's a, you should be, I don't know, you should be the governor. Not what you know, here, the governor, can't party here. Governor of Ezani, can't party here. When Ngozi will have to do, not be here, but on a Twitter. Gonna, gonna tag, not tag the Donald, Donald Trump. Tag, but not to Trump. Tag go USP government, UN, headquarter of Nigeria, headquarter, headquarter Nigerian army. Official bat, police Nigeria, African Union, Echo Wars. Abya, US Army, British Army. CNNB, RSC, NNI, BBC. BBC World, Fox News, Sky News, Guardian Nigeria, Vanguard, Daily Post, Daily Time Spark, Mobile Punch. Web ya, Anna, call on the Barack Obama, Barack Obama. Barack Obama, Obama, Michelle Obama, Bill Clinton, Hillary Clinton, George Carter. Eh who, uh, then the Ngozi tag, not, not quite, you know, not governor, you know. Then the property governor. Property governor. Oh, the same governor. Put all of our boy on the chot, 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 chot. In the period of that time, not over here. Obviously, I can't party here now. Yeah, yeah, I can't party. Also, 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 they are male, also. So, yeah, I can't be a zena, I can't party, you know. You said idiot, so they are male, no, they should have left, yeah, no. With this, we have left, yeah. Governor of, governor of the, of, of Ezani. Ezani, Ezani Ngozi, not really Ezani, eh PM created. Eh because my, I'm a commander, we is good, my, no Ezani, I have a queen of my voice, man, I'm a war. Breakings, April twenty five, twenty twenty five, the war for the survivor and the, the same survivor, why not, he is here, he said. Breakings, April twenty five, twenty twenty five, the war for the survivor and the, the same survivor, why not, yeah, we say. Why not, yeah, we say, the world of survival and the defense. Of the United States of Biafra, life story and the video of the wickedness of Nigerian government headquarters by. Nation, put it, well, I could, yeah, could look at ITS, in, yeah, yeah, why, yeah, why sample, I think. When Nigerian Army, official NNI, Barack Obama, uh. No, no, no. Okay, um, to all behalf France, the message here to extract is not about the. The laughing or the gestures that is pictured at. The house that has been destroyed here, the message we want behalf France to understand here is that. Ngozi posted the names, the phone numbers of all these groups of state governors. Out on the media, whenever she appoint new person and wherever she appoints. She will post the name out on social media, post the phone number, also post and say, this is Ezani. This is Ngu, this is Boi, this is, eh, eh, Omambala, this is Odumegu, this is, eh, eh. Um, Oweri, so all these, their informations are online. It did not just stop there again. She has given them full any accounts to make deposit. Now, Nduka Ebelle was one of the persons she used. To open account, a joint account with the Fulani man that she is using. And Nukai Bele was picked up by One Nigeria in Lagos with over five trucks, with dogs. He's in DSS now, nobody has heard of Nukai Bele again. It is Ngozi that still ran to the media to come and post and say, breaking news, Nukai Bele has been picked by One Nigeria. She is still the person that posted his account number, posted his number, posted his name out on the media. And since then, more behalf France that have foolishly followed Ngozi have also been picked up by DSS. Most especially those that are paying money into the Fulani account. Now, the Fulani account now is carrying clearly only the Fulani name. Because after Nukai Bele was picked up by DSS, because of having, being in that same account. With the Fulani man which Ngozi made him to open, to become a joint account. As Ebelle was picked up now, Nukai Bele was picked up, Nukai Bele is no more to be seen. She has opened another account with another Fulani name again, and she's circulating that one again for all of you to go and use and put money. And now, the Ezani state governor that she mobilized and they did the propaganda matching. With forty states and they circulated the videos everywhere before posting their numbers and their names on the social media. This one now, she has sent this one to Israeli grave again. And the thing here is that she is the one that will do you, she is the first person that will run into the media to come and make the announcement. After she made the announcement of Nukai Bele being picked up by DSS.
Do you know, before she do make the announcement, she, she work with them, so she know when they, whenever they did. So she, you know, she work with the Nigerian state. So when, while they, while they are, you know, carrying out the operation, they inform her, they do cooperate and let her look at, this what is going on. So she work with the Nigerian state, thank you, please, sorry that I interrupted you.
No, thank you, my APM for that input, yeah, behalf France need to know what you have just said now. That she works with these people and people are so foolish that she will come and give you pre-information of. What she's going to do and then you still go and fall inside, but the question now is, since Ngozi Rabo Fulani came out. And wrote on Twitter and shouted that DSS has picked up Nukai Ebelle in Lagos in his house. After she used him to open a joint account with the Fulani man, which she used the account to circulate for some of you to go and put money. Since that day that she came and shouted, have you asked her again, where is Nukai Ebelle, you have not asked. Today now, she has done another one with who, Ezani governor, as she put it here now. So every day she is on aliveing one behalf France or another. Every day she is on aliveing one behalf and another, when you tell her, don't post names of behalf France online. She is the person that will tell you, anybody telling you that we should not post names and account of what we are doing. That person is a fool. At the end of the day, she will be the first person to rush to the media to come and update you of the next person that Fulani terrorists. Have picked up through her handiworks. So it's not about the laugh that the person that explained this video here is laughing that we are concerned here. But it is the message here that has been delivered, which we want people to understand and see the dangers. This is the result of putting the names of state administrators in the home line, online. Their phone numbers, their address, their state and where they come from and how to contact them. So behalf France, tomorrow, when you sit down and then you are shouting of who is your problem, know where. Now, this is the one that she did for Ebelle Nuka. Up till today, she has not come back to come and tell you where is Ebelle Nuka, look at it on the screen now. You can see, when somebody now say, you don't have to be posting their names and their phone numbers and their bank names on the. Social media, she will tell you, anyone telling you to keep names and banks and programs secret is a fool. That person does not know where the government is going, so the government is going, the government that she's running is going into Fulani. Parade, that is where she's taking all of you to, APM, over to you if you may say something, please.
Yes, uh. You know, the same apply to this whistle. Their friends are over seventy million, why just five million whistle? So it's just to kill behalf France gradually, so this whistle is to identify. Behind France that are part of this movement, this whistle now, we start, you know, it's a tracker, just like GPS. We use this whistle to track behalf France and kill behalf France. Please, behalf France that are following Ngozi, just, I don't know, we be speaking, preaching. Disease from that evil woman, she don't meant well for us. I have not seen even from the time of our leader Mazzy Namdikan to our Prime Minister. None of them have come publicly and given behalf France information, phone number, all that, but Ngozi have done that. So I don't know what else, uh, you know, any other sign that we make you to. Uh, know that this woman don't, she's not a behalf, she's a Fulani. She's not, and the way of her models, models of her appearances, it can, that can just. Open your eyes to know that she is not for us. You know, sometime I don't know who advise her, or maybe she just purposely doing it so. To alert us, to let us know that she's not real, it's too many red flag, too many. Everyone that have identified herself, eh, him, himself, uh, working for Ngozi from the behalf land. Have, have one problem after another, one problem from this to this. It's heartbreaking that our people, we are trying to save them and they be keep falling victim, you know. This is just like cheap, very cheap victims. What is whistle, whistle blowing, pay, pay, pay going to do for you? That whistle, who are you using the whistle to alert? So it's just something of common sense and this whistle, Ngozi already planned it in a way. You have chips on it, you know, who know what and what else, all kind of stuff that maybe when you blow it. The air coming from inside, you can pass out, you can, you know, have some kind of virus. Please, behalf France, remember what happened in, from, eh, Emo State from Hope Uzadima with cellphone. All this are to identify you, track you down and buy you. Please, if you want to buy whistle of your own choice, there's type of whistle we use for soccer, you call it football, you can go get it. Whistle don't cost up to, up to five hundred, eh, eh, five, I don't think that whistle is up to one thousand. Aje, I don't think so, go, don't be, don't fall in this cheap trap by Ngozi or Abesi. Her time is running out, she is doing whatever she can. And every day, every day, her handlers are asking her question, that's why you see. Uh, Christopher Musa start crying, Mazzy Sonia Asparawa, when is the last time you hear from Musa crying? Musa is not crying because they know that Ngozi can't deliver. And even our leader Mazzy Namdikan, that if you go to this, uh, Parare government. Uh, eh, office, office of the devils. You will see that this woman even hang the picture of our leader Mazzy Namdikan, our leader Mazzy Namdikan, don't even know who she, don't even know she even exist. Don't even know the, no, Ngozi, so please, behalf France, be wise. We are trying the best we can, you know, uh, to warn you, tread with caution, think twice. Read the lines, everything starting from January. To our re-declaration on the second till now, Ngozi have proven that she's agent. At the time Ngozi stated that the reason why our leader Mazzy, eh, eh, she won't be afraid to be re-declared on the twenty nine. Which behalf France will declare on the second with the validation of the, of this accounting of the vote. And the delegates, she said, the reason why is because, uh. Uh, she get intel that they will release our leader, our, our leader Mazzy Namdikan. Then our leader will come, when my leader Mazzy Namdikan get to Finland, our leader will not disrupt. So he is our leader, even if he come on that very second and say, fellow behalf France. Let's move it to a better day, let's change the date, we will salute him and say, yes, sir, onion do. The happiness that he's relieved is more than anything else. Because when we come in what we are doing, you talk about re-declaration, he actually the rightful person to re-declare. Then we are follow, but since if, you know, we thought, uh, you know, we already knew that before the, uh. That Nigerian state, they're not gonna release him, but what we are doing is what we releasing. So with that, our Prime Minister, we are moving, we speak to try to do whatever we can to secure his release. So if he available to come and re-declare behalf, all of us, we pack one, one side, even our Prime Minister, we all. Do a joy and let him re-declare, because he's still our boss, he's still our leader, he's still ahead of us. And this lady said, oh, the reason why she want to re-declare, who never, who no one even authorized her to re-declare on the twenty nine. Uh, somebody was saying they have a vote in the cabinet to re-declare on the twenty nine, I'm not in that meeting. A lot of us did not vote, I didn't know, we didn't vote for her to re-declare behalf on the twenty nine. And a week, no, few days before that twenty nine, the last town hall meeting of twenty twenty, twenty four, which is US town hall meeting. I made it clear that I'm gonna be coming to Finland, we are gonna be there, even our lobby are inviting to that town hall meeting. That we all will be coming, and I also made it clear that whoever trying to change the date. Because before that, I already heard that she's planning cool with some group. I heard it, well, well, I'm still here in US, you know, I, I, I didn't know that she already have planned this pre-plan it. So, uh, for her to come and say that we, we vote, we didn't vote for that. In that very day, I made it clear that no one to change the date, that is already ordained and annointed. The day that our Prime Minister, eh, eh, you know, have chosen that this day that we all agree with him. And oh, almost a year, even the media, there's a lot of publicity about the second. And that very day on the second, on the twenty nine in Lati, Finland, when I was speaking with one of our, 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 uh, media. You know, uh, 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 media, uh, minister, I also made it clear, she heard me. Because by then, the ministers are already on the line to walk, uh, walk to their seats. So that behalf France, we welcomed it, she even heard me saying that the date must not be changed. The date must remain the second, so I never voted for the twenty nine, Mazzy Sonia, are you part of those that participate in that vote? Do you know, I don't know about it, so please, behalf France, we already identify who the enemies. We already identify the sub, the moons among us, and we are smart people, let's make a right choice. Because if not, for those that are following her foolishly. Gradually, one after another, this exactly what happened to this, our brother that call himself governor, living in a mud house. We happen to. More other behalf France, please, disease, when it's time for us to answer governance, we will. When everything have the time, don't take because of the title, the name is so big. You answer governor and you live in a mud house that without no electricity, without nothing and your life in danger. Let's follow him who know rude, till tomorrow, our Prime Minister Mazzy Simon Eppa still remain a good leader. Who have the template of which we still follow his template, thank you.
Thank you, APM, uh, good number, your hand is up, it's not replaced because we are shutting down.
About May thirtieth, I don't know if the awareness is, is, is being created already, I don't know, May thirtieth, Remembrance Day.
May thirtieth, as a behalf, you know that May thirtieth is a holiday. You know quite well that May thirtieth is a historic day in the history of behalf. Yeah, yeah, the screen is for something, we're talking about something. So good the number and to every behalf, any behalf that does not understand the significance of May thirtieth. That is not a behalf, that person has been sleeping and does not know anything about behalf, I should not even be talking about behalf. So, May thirtieth is a universal day to all behalf France. And on that very day, behalf France will gather from all part of the world and it's gonna be another memorable day. So it's not something that people start making it to be a civil, that's never existed before. That is what the, eh, foolish ones that are just coming up yesterday are trying to make May thirtieth a civil. Eh, they are the first people to talk about May thirtieth, May thirtieth existed long before we. Enter this behalf liberation yesterday, uh huh, the people that made the day thirtieth to be in history. They kept it and it is still going on, and if we die tomorrow, we will die and say, live that memorable day, it will still be there, nobody can erase it. Alright, um, we have it on record that our Supreme Leader will appear in court on the twenty ninth of April. On the second of May and on the sixth of May, and according to the traditions of the behalf people. Any day that our Prime Minister, eh, our Supreme Leader appears in the Zoo Court in solidarity with him. Behind France honor by keeping behalf land holy. By observing sit at home without any monkey moving about, that is a tradition of the behalf people. So behalf France should remember that when our Supreme Leader will appear in court, it's an holy day. Those three days are holy days, holy day, so. The media team should embark on the awareness to remind behalf France of the twenty ninth of April. The second of May and the sixth of May, these are the days that our Supreme Leader will appear in court. So those days should be kept holy and everyone should know what is obtainable in behalf land. Alright, stop giving your information to or Abu Fulani woman who. now, another person is down in Isyani state. Those that Ngozi has taken down, nicked him mostly without anybody knowing, without bringing it to the media like this. They plenty pass the one that you see the names on the media. Like our APM just said, learn and follow who know road. Stop going to kill yourselves because of stupidity and the small money that they will give you and the sheer hatred that you have for Sunny. The sheer hatred that you have for Ajare, the sheer hatred that you have for APM. It is not my face, that is the freedom, it is Biafra. Okay, listen very well, it is not the face of APM or his voice or the way he speak that is a Biafra. It's not the face of Ajare or how he speak that is a Biafra. Biafra is in the homeland. Okay, anybody can give you Biafra as far as they follow the template that our wonderful leaders have kept on the table. Follow who know road. It's not my face. Thank you, be a friends, and thank you so much, Ombala State. Thank you, everyone that have keyed in. Tomorrow we meet again in our town hall, eh, our fundraising, yeah, town hall meeting is on Sunday. So for, for those that will be accompanying APM to USA Town Hall Meeting on Sunday, please, um, the flight will be leaving by one PM, uh, US time. So try to be at the Baltimore head office so that you can board the same VIP flight with APM. To get down to where the main thing will be happening. And if you are in Biafra land, you can as well board the flight from Enugu Airport and, um, Otakot and Kalaba and quite international.
Let them know that the flight is not going to Nigeria, it's going to Biafra.
No, 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 the flight is not going to Nigeria, that's why I'm telling them, if they are in Biafra land, the the flight they have to take from Biafra land, eh, eh, to leave, is not in Nigeria, is in Biafra land, Enugu.
Kago International Airport, Umueri, Enugu, Otakot, and Quaybon and then Kalaba.
Okay, God bless you. So be a friends already know their international airport of where they can use to move out. So nothing like, nothing like we are taking you to Nigeria or you have to go and board from Nigeria, board from Biafra land. Thank you all to everyone, I'll see you all tomorrow. Thank you all, APM, thank you for honoring, eh, Ombala students, thank you. Thank you, thank you, thank you, thank you.
Ombala, thanks for having me, thank you.
Thank you all, thank you all, thank you all, and see you all tomorrow, thank you.
Aston Ma, I've given you the name, Aston Ma.
Yes, we'll go up in Wacheneke, we are, we are done now, thank you. Thank you. All right, see you all tomorrow, we have to retire to relax, yeah.